And the person and a friend who may you know knows you well could also bring out kind of.
Recording in progress.
Community. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the, this regular meeting of the school committee on February thirteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty five P M. Our agenda this evening is we'll begin with public comment, then we'll move into superintendent chair and student remarks. We'll then move into a consent agenda, which includes consideration of acceptance of donations of fifteen thousand dollars from the John and Mary Murphy Educational Foundation and five thousand dollars from the W H S Winchester High School Parent Faculty Association for Winchester for the W H S graduation. We'll then have consideration of acceptance of an in kind donation from Kathy Alexander and the Winchester Cooperative Theater for the McCall Auditorium curtain with an approximate value of ten thousand dollars. And then we will move into report update and action items, including the twenty twenty five, twenty six Winchester High School Course of Studies. Consideration of approval of curriculum competency determination for graduation. And the proposed first day of school that for the twenty twenty five, twenty six calendar year. We'll have an update on the Lincoln Chiller and flat work design and then an F Y twenty six budget development update. And next page, school committees. Then we'll move into anticipated future agenda items. Next meetings and an executive session for the purpose number three of discuss to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee and adjournment. So with that, we will go to public comment. And if you are here for public comment, then I would just ask that you raise your digital hand. Given another few seconds or so, but I don't see any digital hands. Would anybody else like to?
I do not either. No hands raised.
No hands.
No hands raised.
Nope, I don't see anybody.
Thank you. So with that, I'll just declare public comment closed and we will move into superintendent chair and student remarks.
Good evening, everybody.
Dr. Hackett.
Happy, just right on cue. It's a good thing to say I got a lot going on here. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody and I want to really, we have a couple of agenda items today where we have guests join us who will be giving us a couple of presentations on the Lincoln Chiller as well as the flat work, wicked flat work, really an update. And for those of you who have not been here for a bit, it may be all new. So I think it's a good opportunity to hear the updates in the design and have them walk us through where they are with it. Not asking for any action tonight, but with that, I would yield my time for the superintendent's report because I do believe between that and a few other things on the agenda, we will, I probably don't need to hear from me much, much more than that. So.
Okay, thank you. Nothing in particular for chair remarks. I just say we are, February vacation is upon us. So seems like it just rolled right on up. So I hope that everybody in the community has a very wonderful week next week and hope you get some rest and enjoy the time and stay safe. Our students, Michaela Jens and Harris Shaw were with us right before this meeting, but then they said that they had to go help out with the carnation preparation for tomorrow at the high school. So they just sent along some good wishes and we wish them good luck getting ready for that. So let's see.
Did you want me to put in a plug in a little more detail for the twenty fourth, Madam Chair?
Um, I think we can do that when we get to the, to item F under the report update and action items. If that's what you were referring to.
Whenever you would like. Thanks.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and do it then. So let's see. All right. Consent agenda. We have the donations from the John and Mary Murphy Foundation.
Can I just offer a remark on this since, since the public doesn't see the detail that the John and Mary Murphy Foundation donation specifically is going towards offsetting the cost of Winchester High School's graduation at Boston Symphony Hall. And Mr. Mahoney and his team have done just a huge amount of work looking at so many options under the sun. And I'm very appreciative of that. I, I hope students and families will not only enjoy the day, but will, will have fond memories of that for many, many years to come. I think that's a fantastic space. I'm, I'm sort of envious that other classes maybe won't have that opportunity, but important, I think for us to just note that among the many, many options that the, the high school team explored. In fact, Boston Symphony is one of the more economical options, but, but it's not free. So really just appreciate the foundation stepping up and we should also acknowledge this is basically a consequence of our delayed start on the high school gym reconfiguration. We had a low bidder. The intent was to do it over the summer and the fall to be ready for this winter season. That low bidder walked away. Second low bidder was not within the budget, so we had to go to Fall Town Meeting and ask for some more money. We're turning that space over to the contractor next month, and that's why the space is just not available for graduation. But I really want to thank Mr. Mahoney and his team. I think, I think I think it's going to be fantastic, but and also just really appreciate the generosity of the John and Mary Murphy Educational Foundation to help make that happen. As well as
And the P F A.
Parent Faculty Association for kicking in some money as well. And I'm happy to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Let's see, Miss Bergstrom?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. So thank you again, as Mr. Nixon was saying so much to the John and Mary Murphy Educational Foundation and to the P F A and also to Miss Kathy Alexander and the Cooperative Theater for supporting our schools. We will now move on to report update and action items, the first of which is the twenty twenty five High School Course of Studies. And I believe I saw Mr. Mahoney here, Principal.
I'm here. I just didn't want to keep my camera on because it'd be blushing over the pleasantries that Mr. Nixon gave us for our efforts for graduation, but thank you.
It was a monumental effort.
Well, we're, we're just starting out. Let's, let's.
Well, there, yes, that's, yes, now it goes. That's right. Finish line next.
Are you saying talk to you again when it's over, Dennis?
Yes, we'll see you in the afternoon, noon eight. Let's see how it goes.
Yeah. So the
So Principal, oh, I'm just, I'm sorry. Principal Mahoney had come to us two meetings ago, just with an introduction very briefly about the twenty twenty five, twenty six course of studies. And he had just introduced at a very high level, the changes to the course of studies. And Mr. Principal Mahoney, if you had anything that you would like to say?
Sure. Thank you again for having me. We have started our core selection process where guidance makes presentations in the auditorium with each grade. You know, ninth, tenth and eleventh, we don't meet with the seniors because they don't select courses anymore, which is kind of sad. It's one of those tipping points in the year. So the course of studies has been posted on the high school website and kids have been accessing it to see the opportunities that they have in front of them. And we just, I think we're here tonight to finalize and take any clarity questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
I, I, I'm not sure if others are raising their digital hand. I, I guess I have a question or comment. I'm looking for just a back and forth with Mr. Mahoney if I can on one element.
Sure, go right ahead, Mr. Nixon.
So thank you for being here. I believe that you're, when you, when you presented the draft, Mr. Mahoney, there was one of the deletions involves theater. Can you, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot. You, you gave a pretty good elevator speech when you last were before us. Can you just share with us again? What this draft is proposing, taking out and a little bit about why I think there was you, there, there's been some declining, as I understand it, declining student interest in the course. Can you just sort of give us that speech?
Sure. So it, it's, you know, I might not be seen as a theater guy, but I'm definitely passionate about the arts and the, the performing arts, the fine arts. And when I came to Winchester High School, we, there were, there were no theater classes. I was shocked when I was actually interviewing for the, for the job that I went through the program of studies prior to the interview, and I realized that there's no real theater department. There's no, there are no theater classes. Knowing that the, you know, performing arts is highly respected and we do a great job in terms of our spring musical, our fall play and the middle school program is legendary. So we did put together theater courses over the last few years. And we haven't seen the enrollment that we would have expected to see. It, the reasons why are, it can be very varied. It's an individual reason per student often. So giving you specific answers or reasons why we haven't seen the enrollment we need in order to keep the classes going as opposed to putting our resources somewhere else. I can't give you those specific answers. I think what we want to do here, because I don't want to take the classes out, but again, resources aren't limited and we need to put our teachers in places to keep our class sizes down overall. Wherever we, we can with theater classes that are effectively lower than 10 students per class. The low enrollment is just something we have to, we have to really make hard decisions about. And so for this year, and I don't have a timeline. It might be a year or two, but it's something that I definitely want to bring back. We're going to take the theater classes out due to low enrollment, again, individual reasons. And kind of explore how we can make the theater courses more either accessible, interesting or the opportunity, you know, something that students would take over, say, an A P course or another course in the course of study. So there's no specific answers other than it's, it's just a low enrollment issue right now. So we want to rethink it, explore it, keep it on the shelf. And I think you all know, I'm not afraid of tinkering and trying to find ways to make changes and updates. And so it's not gone forever. It's just on the shelf for right now while we explore it a little further.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. I, so here are my, here are my thoughts on this. I did hear from some community members following your initial presentation. And some hearkened back to some representations that were made implicitly or explicitly around the last operating override around investments in theater. And I was actually think, although Dr. Hackett wasn't around for that, he was around, I think a year ago. Dr. Hackett, you put in a, was it not an Esser? Was it an Esser or ARPA, ARPA request, right? For some supplemental infrastructure on the stage, I think some improved lighting. And my memory is that enhancing the theater experience was a part of that, that message. So I'm, I'm reflecting on that. And I'm also reflecting on the extended debate we had like a couple of years ago about whether to add Mandarin one at the high school. It was like one, one thirteenth of one percent or something of our budget. And ultimately we did decide to do it. It, it's always hard, but, but, but that was a very lengthy conversation that I think everybody and I don't know if Dr. Matthews was watching at the time, but that was a lengthy and somewhat painful conversation. The point is, I think this committee historically wrestles with, you know, adding nickels and dimes to the budget for something, even though the case can be made. So I, I have some anxiety about cutting theater. Even though to your point, you may feel like you could tinker with it. I wish I could better understand. Number one, why enrollment isn't what we were hoping for. I'm also curious to understand if it's, let's say, an average of 10 or 11 kids, is that not a meaningful experience for them? Because I think we added Mandarin one. Expecting enrollment would be very low. I don't think we expected we would have 10 kids in Mandarin one, but we said we were going to make that investment. So, so whether it's schedule clash with other courses, parents have asked me, you know, could this have something to do with the, the G P A scale? I mean, the, the credit one would get. And of course we've, we voted a new scale. Could that change things? I, I worry that we, I worry about cutting the cord on this. Are we going to lose the pulse completely and not be able to bring this back? So I, I struggle, but I'm going to put doc, if I may, Madam Chair, I want to put Dr. Hackett on the spot, just given that we made an ARPA request to support in part the theater. Does, does Dr. Hackett have sort of a philosophy? Does, does Dr. Hackett have sort of a philosophy or a recommendation?
Could I jump in before that, Mr. Nixon?
Yeah.
I'd like to say thank you. The theater's never been better. The actual auditorium has never been better. We have, you know, with the new Batten system, we do have new lighting. We've been, yeah, tinkering with the sound. So, the money is not wasted because we do have the Spring Musical, the Fall Play, a number of rentals, which we can get into one day. But the theater itself is, is stronger than it's ever been. This particular class, we need to look under the hood and figure out why it's not. The, the enrollment we have carried for a few years, and it has not increased. In fact, it's declined. But we know that there's an interest. We know that we have students that love the performing arts. So, we just need some time to figure out how to make it work better.
So. Thank you, Ms. Bolanese. I just wanted to respond to something Mr. Nixon said, and to support Mr. Mahoney on this. I think in the last override, we tried to build a theater arts program, six twelve, and we pretty much only got as far as a halftime theater teacher at the middle school, which is much appreciated and makes theater, a theater class at the middle school and options much more accessible to kids there. But I think what we need to do to help Mr. Mahoney and to help build a theater program is to really support a theater arts program at the high school. I think having Theater Arts One and Theater Arts Two is not a theater program, and it is not a theater program when we have to classify it under the English Department to, to move it forward. And that's not to diminish the work of who's been teaching that at the high school or the passion behind it. But Mr. Nixon, as you said before, if we build it, they will come. There's a little bit difference to adding a language class and building a, building out a whole theater arts program, which I think this committee has talked about and identified as part of our 2030 plan. And I, what I hear Mr. Mahoney saying is that it's not necessarily a lack of interest in the, the theater program, but it's a lack of enrollment, which to me are two different things.
And we have, we have tinkered as well. So, it used to, the class was i- in the performing arts section of the Course of Studies. We didn't see the enrollment we would have expected. We added an honors level version of theater to kind, kind of combat the whole GPA conversation. We still didn't see the enrollment that we would like. So, we moved it to the English section so that, to say that if you take this, it can count towards an English graduation requirement. We, we've made it very enticing, and yet it still hasn't taken off as, as much as we'd like. But I agree with Ms. Bergstrom, like a whole program and the teacher dedicated to that program, I think would be a fantastic way to go. However, part of my job is to look at overall student enrollment in all classes, class, and general class sizes and make those hard decisions. And when you have other classes that are larger than we want them to be, we have to make those difficult decisions and see what we can do down the road.
And Mr. Mahoney, I think this actually helps us as a committee, because I think it demonstrates exactly what you're talking about. That, you know, we sort of, just adding a class in here and there may not be, may not be the best strategy for getting at the end goal. So, I appreciate your efforts to try to make this work over the years. I know there is student interest. I noticed in the English Department, there's also a theater on comedic writing and performance. So, it's not that students don't have access to a performance class if they want to do that. And certainly, I know the Spring Musical, Mr. Mahoney, had a, an enormous number of kids auditioned, more than they've ever seen before.
That's correct.
I think we'll need to hear from the students too, that this is something that they're interested in and how it will work, would work with their schedules to, to build, really build this out thoughtfully.
Get your tickets to Bye Bye Verdi now. They will sell out.
Dr. Hackett?
Only because Mr. Nixon asked me to speak to it. I support everything that's been said. I, I think just to take a, even a bigger step back from this. If we're gonna commit, which I think we need to, to a theater program, I think we need to commit to a department. And programs like this take a champion to build it. They take work. They take someone who is full-time trying to build a feeder system, who is recruiting kids. And we have to have the ability to have options throughout the schedule, throughout the school day, for students to be able to access it. So, we know that our students are fully scheduled. And when we have kind of one-off courses that are only offered in certain periods, at certain times of the day, it often doesn't work for students who may wanted, who have wanted to have taken it, but can't take it because they have to take or they have a conflict in their schedule. So, as Ms. Bergstrom mentioned, we are committed to really building out and, and thinking about a, a theater program and a theater department as part of the 2030 plan. I, I just would say that if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right. And you had that experience with, with Mandarin. It made a, a great decision to bring Mandarin to the middle school, understanding that you had to build a feeder system to bring it up to the high school. And now, we, and you sense expanded that, that position. So, I think we need to think about it the same way and understand that we just need to give all kids a chance to access and ha- also have someone who's actually pushing and advocating for the program, like we do with our English Department heads and other department heads who, who are overseeing an entire department.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions?
I just had one other quick question for Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney, in the past, at the high school, we've talked about kids having access to classes and to classes that they're interested in taking, and often, some of the classes I noticed still have the prewe- prerequisites listed. Can you just talk a little bit about how you have been working with guidance and departments at the high school to make classes available to all kids that want to be able to take?
Sure. I think, so in the past, in the past few years, we've begun to roll back the barriers to entry. It's something that I'm, I'm passionate about, to allow access. But we do it conservatively. So, I think when I started here, you needed an A in a certain course, or you needed an A minus in a certain course, even just to continue the course. And we've been rolling those somewhat arbitrary grades down. So, like instead of the A, now you need an eighty-five, or you need an eighty. Instead of, you know, a requirement, you need, you know, a recommendation. But we still have some courses that are required in order to take, you know, certain, like an art course. They want to have, instead of jumping right to a high-level art course, the art department would like to see that you have the ability in a intro course or a, you know, an honors level intro course. So, this is something that's taking some time, and it's really born out of best interest for students. And sometimes, you know, the adults have the best interest of a kid, and, and maybe we're wrong about it. But oftentimes, we find that students that, you know, have their parents and themselves, they override into a class that we say, you know, you have demonstrated throughout the course of a year that you have this particular skill set now. You might just not be ready for this level of a course or this type of course. It's not to say you won't get there, but you might not be ready at this time. What happens when the students override into that course? They find themselves that they're not necessarily ready. Now, there's plenty of success stories as well. But oftentimes, a student will, will really struggle because they were not ready for that class or that level of class at that time. And then it gets into a really stressful situation for kids, where they're looking at either staying in the course and toughing it out, and maybe getting a grade that they don't want to see on their transcript, or trying to move their schedule, where they might have to, they might have an English class that they have all their friends in, but another class that they need to drop down at a level into, they have to, what we call blow up your schedule. And they might have to change your entire schedule, which changes a little bit of the social paradigm the student, you know, student might find themselves in. And it's a very stressful situation for a lot of kids. And so, there are success stories of students overriding into a class that they have not been recommended for. But a lot more often, it works out in a sort of negative situation for a student. So, what we've done is we've begun to roll back the barriers to entry year after year and allow a lot more, a, a lot more conversation, parent, student, teacher, where this teacher will say, I'm not recommending you for this course. But if it's a course you want to take, you can override into it and allow the student to explore the, or, you know, have the opportunity. I think what we're putting, what we still have in the Course of Studies are just some, you know, speed bumps. Not, not, the road's not closed necessarily, but just some, some warning signs, you know, curves ahead, you know, construction ahead, that type of, some orange traffic cones, just to say the experts in the classroom who have seen you for a hundred and eighty days, or, you know, some odd days, and have seen the work that you've produced, seen your, your level of writing, seen your level of research, or, or whether you're, you know, you're passionate about a subject or not, we recommend you to go in this direction. If you want to override, you know, math is, math has been great about saying, these are the expectations, but math will allow you to override into a course. Again, what we see more often than not is that a student really has to focus on that particular course. Maybe they struggle and succeed, but oftentimes, they, they, they're struggling. So, there's the opportunities there. We don't advertise or overadvertise the opportunity, but we have conservatively wer- rolled back the barriers to entry, and we'll continue to do so. It's a conversation that we're always having. It's a little bit born out of like, we want kids to be happy, we want kids to be healthy, and we don't want them to be overwhelmed. And sometimes, sometimes we're overdoing that.
I, I appreciate the opportunities for kids to at least be able to consider that. I know sometimes, particularly at that eighth to ninth grade jump, kids become different kind of learners in high school necessarily than they were in middle school. So, I appreciate that it, it's become just a little bit more flexible and a little bit more of a conversation than a hard line. And I agree with you. I think the math department's done a great job with providing even bridge materials over the summer for kids that
It does, it does happen.
Go up a level.
And like, young, young Denny Mahoney needed to become a better student when he was a freshman in college. So, it took me a little while longer to realize, oh, I, I can do this, but I need to really do this and not just go through the motions. My first college transcript was a disappointment to my family. And they made that clear about how much they were paying versus how much I would be paying if it continued. So, it took that eye-opening moment. I remember where I was. I remember what my father said. And, you know, I fell in with the right group of, right group of kids that were academically motivated and supported each other. And it was a life-changing moment, but it took me until I was probably nineteen to figure that out. So, yes, eighth, ninth grade would be great, but some guys, some, some kids do it a little slower.
Thanks, Mr. Mahoney.
Are there any other questions? Let's give Mr. Hopcroft a chance.
Okay. Sorry, Dr. Matthews. I, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, Mr. Mahoney. It's clear that you and your team have really have been thoughtful about these changes, and I was excited to see some really interesting courses in there that, you know, like, there's a whole bunch of them, but, you know, the forensic science or cybersecurity, you know, these are things that, you know, we didn't even dream of when I was in school. So, it's, you know, great opportunities that are being provided here, and I, you know, I, I know there's a, a never-ending, you know, moving of what comes in and what goes out. Yeah, I am, you know, a fan of the arts, and, and, and so I appreciate Dr. Hackett and, and you and the 2030 plan and figuring out, you know, from a budgetary point of view, let's put that on the wish list and figure out what's needed and what the resources would be and how to, how to handle that down the road. But all in all, you know, I, I think it's great and very supportive. I, I, one curiosity, you know, because just when you were talking about students overriding and, and, and the potential to sort of get out of your skis a little bit. Can you just remind me what is around, student needs to drop down or, or out of a course? Yeah, I, I seem, I think I recall you saying something for, in the GPA discussion, maybe about him is not showing up on transcripts and doing a lot of, having a lot of thoughtfulness about giving the students the flexibility to do things. I just couldn't quite recall what happens in that situation.
I might have missed, so, so I, I got a little sidetracked in listening, just, just.
Sorry.
Their cybersecurity is on the, on the shelf again for, because AP in College Board, we felt they weren't up to, their curriculum was not up to snuff to offer the course to the level that we would want to offer it. That is definitely, it should be back by next year, and we'll have a teacher trained in that. But we thought that College Board wasn't ready. But I did, so I got a little sidetracked. Are you talking about dropping, dropping a level?
Yeah, I was just curious about that. Yeah, and I must have just read quickly when I was reading the description of the course and not realized that one was being pulled out. But, um, it's still very, very exciting. Yeah, no, I just, in that conversation you were having a moment ago about students, yeah, sometimes there's a success when they, you know, override into a course, and, and that's great, but sometimes people get over their skis. I was just, I recall that, I think you talked about this in a prior meeting. I just didn't remember what impact it has on their transcript really and, and their future. How much flexibility do they have to make that mistake?
You know, there's, there's a lot of different scenarios, Mr. Hopcroft, because we, we'll allow a student to drop. We have, we have certain deadlines and timelines that are in our Course of Studies of, you know, you can't drop a course the day before grades come out. It's, I don't, I don't want to misquote the exact timeframe. It's usually like two weeks before, two weeks after. We have, we have time constraints so that there's no manipulation of a transcript. And if you do drop a level, more often than not, those, the grades, so say you drop a science from honors to college prep, the court, the, the grades will blend together over time. Depending on when you drop a course, you might have a W in your transcript as a withdraw. There, there's a lot of nuances to the dropping of a course or the, or going up a level as well.
Okay, just a curiosity, because it came up, but that, that's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm supportive of this here.
Yeah, we're, I definitely, that cybersecurity, that, you know, like theater, that it, those courses, I mean, imagine a, a Course of Studies that has theater in cybersecurity, in forensics, and, you know, one of, one of the amazing history classes. It's the diversity of offerings that we want to have at Winchester High School. It makes it interesting and e- exciting. You know, when, I think when we were in high school, you were taking just what was in front of you and just the books that were in front of you, and you didn't have those choices. I don't recall too many electives when I was in high school that were really, you know, there were science electives, but outside of science, there wasn't too many offer, opportunities for, you know, really, I guess, newer courses, I guess you'd say. But I also just admitted I wasn't paying attention in high school as much as I should have been, so, maybe that was on you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney.
Mr. Nixon, did I see your hand raised again?
Hey, Mr. Matthews also had a question in there.
I, I, I was just gonna clarify, cybersecurity is out next year, but Mr. Mahoney, pick, pick that up. I, I have, I, I do have a follow-up question related to our last meeting for Mr. Mahoney after we vote on this, but I'll, I'll wait till we vote.
Uh, Dr. Matthews, did you actually have your hand up?
Yeah, that's okay. Sorry, I didn't have my hand up. I apologize. We, we just, I think Tom and I talked at the same time. So, Dennis, is, is there a possibility that you could just sort of talk? One of the pieces of feedback I've heard in the community is around sort of the availability of AP and honors classes at the high school. And I just sort of, I, I wonder if you've done some comparative benchmarking or have some data on sort of how are, are course offerings compared to, to peer districts around the Commonwealth? And just sort of maybe talk about, I know that you're looking at the cybersecurity one, but if there are any other plans of things to add?
So, we do, you know, we do some comparative analysis with other schools, particularly around the AP courses. And I would say that we probably have more AP courses in general than most schools. As always, it comes down to what we are able to offer based off of how many teachers we have. I, I don't want to get into the weeds and talk about our class sizes and how many teachers I believe the high school should have for the population, but we run on a, on a pretty tight personnel budget compared to other area schools of our size, to say it respectfully. So, could we offer more classes? Yes, I'd love that. Do we have the bodies to teach those classes? No, we do not. So, we're, we're really limited for, you know, our class sizes and, and the human beings that we have to teach those courses. So, I, I would say, I would argue that, you know, my, my sons go to Bedford High School, so I'm, I'm very, you know, I pay attention to what the classes that they have, and we have many more APs. When I say many, I'm talking a considerable amount more of AP course offerings than, than, say, Bedford High School, not to put Bedford on the spot, but you know, we, we do English, we can do English Lit and English Comp. They only have the one English, you know, they, they, they only have the English Lit course. While we have AP Euro and AP US, it's AP US. So, most, most area high schools, and we also have the AP, I don't want to misquote the, not sociology, but, you know, we have multiple AP courses in our social studies department while, while they have one. Same thing with science. We have AP Physics, AP Chem, AP Bio. Most schools will have an AP Bio and maybe an AP Chem, AP Physics. We definitely haven't done a, you know, a deep dive analysis of other Course of Studies, but We definitely haven't done a, you know, a deep dive analysis of other courses studies, but we do know, are like districts in the courses that they're offering. But if we could have one more teacher for every department, I could offer a lot more classes.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you putting that all out there because I think it's always important to hear where we're at. I've always been impressed by, what we do with the amount of resources we have and how we have consistently overdelivered against what we have available. So, thank you for your work on that and thank you for answering my, my question.
Sure. I mean, I, and I, as I'm like, as the words are, as I'm going through my mind, you know, a lot of schools have, a lot of schools have Spanish and French or just Spanish. And we have AP Spanish, AP French, AP Latin, eight, we're looking into, we're going into AP Mandarin and we have AP Italian. I mean, it's, when I say we have a considerable amount of more AP offerings, um, I think it's only, I'm almost underplaying it.
Thank you. Um, so if, uh, so, if committee members are interested and willing, then we could go ahead and vote the, the, high school course of studies, so as to give a formal.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the Winchester High School Course of Studies for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
For all your hard work and your team's work too.
Before we lose Mr. Mahoney, I think at the, the last school committee meeting, um, the question came up about how exactly, we're communicating to colleges and universities, um, the rationale behind our change in, uh, AP scoring. Um, I think Dr. Hackett, you said we might have an opportunity to hear a little bit about that tonight while Mr. Mahoney was with us. Curious if, if that's coming from you or from Dennis. The inter, the feedback I've gotten from some parents, you know, not everybody follows this as closely as others are, um, now that we've made this change. How are we describing to colleges and universities why we made that change? Um, concern around will colleges and universities think differently about the rigor of the curriculum at Winchester High School, which you, Mr. Mahoney have said, of course, is not changing. Um, so that, that's the community interest is, so now that we've made this decision, how are we communicating it out?
Please, so, um, I would not have given Mr. Mahoney a heads up that this might be, point of discussion this evening, so, and that's on me. Um, so I, I don't, I don't want to put him on the spot, um, if, if, if it's,
Really on the agenda.
We would talk about it tonight. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yep. And I'm telling you that I did not give him a heads up on that. So that's on me.
Okay.
But he may have an answer, so.
I don't know whether to go or not.
It, it's not meant to be a gotcha question. It's just, just in, interest in now that we voted it. So what, what are we communicating? How are we?
So we, everything runs through Naviance and we, we update that our school, our, in our school profile that our GP, and you said AP, but I believe you meant GPA, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so in Naviance, we will put, you know, just some information that our, that our GPA has been updated, um, and our scatter plot will change to reflect that as well. So I don't think we, we don't send an email out or, you know, a blur about to every college in the country saying this is, you know, this is a change that Winchester High School is doing. It's really just done through Naviance. And with a very brief explanation of we went from a three seven to a four point O, um, with something as simple as to say, to fall in line with the, with the, more common standard that we see in like districts. And again, we, we went through the weeds. I think enough to say that, that four point O is not really a standard, um, across the country in the Commonwealth or, you know, New England. So, what colleges do with that information? And I don't want to disappoint anybody, but I don't think they're going to do much with that information. Um, other than acknowledge that our scatter plot has shifted, will shift a little bit.
And I would presume, Mr. Mahoney, given we have like two hundred-ish high schools in Massachusetts, I'm just picking a number. I hope.
Three, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty public high schools in the state.
Three hundred and fifty public high schools. Okay. So, you know, we're just one state. So I'm, I'm assuming that at any given time, there are high schools around the country that are wrestling with the same thing that, that we just did, tweaking their GPA. Um, and so it's not unusual for colleges and universities to find that a school has made some changes.
Yes, and it, and it goes back to the, the origin of the, origin of the issue is will colleges, you know, most colleges will look at our school profile, take, take the courses that are being offered, the level of rigor and look at your child's grade that they can obtain. So whether it's a three point seven or four point O or four point three five, what have you, and where you fell in that, in that opportunity. Most colleges, not all colleges, we, we did establish that.
Yep. Thank you.
This Bergstrom, I see your hand is up.
We perhaps add a future agenda item for maybe later this spring, um, from the guidance department, because it seems like a lot of school committee members tonight have had some questions that, um, focus more around, um, guidance issues and, um, AP in college. And it might be worthwhile to, to have them just come in sometime, later this spring to be able to talk more about this for a presentation and allow us to ask some questions.
Good idea.
Okay. And let Mr. Mahoney go home tonight.
I, I am all, I'm. We're all home, aren't we?
Helping you out, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the.
Actually, I'm sorry, I am going to stick around because the next conversation impacts the high school as well, but I'll be, I'll be silent.
Okay. So now we'll move on to, um, consideration of approval of the curriculum competency determination for graduation. Uh, Dr. Ellen Emma have brought this to us, uh, again, a few weeks, uh, a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago. Um, and this has since gone to the policy subcommittee for a review. And, um, Dr. Matthews and Mr. Hopcroft, I believe you were at that policy subcommittee, um, and had discussed a recommendation on this. So I'll turn it over to the three of you.
I'm, I'm happy to sort of do the, the preface for Dr. Ellen Emma to, to present more on this, but the policy subcommittee was, obviously happy to receive this recommendation. Um, I think we all acknowledge, given, um, the, um, ballot, measure that went into place in Massachusetts, um, that this is, um, probably an interim waypoint on our journey to, um, getting to, to something more final around this particular topic. Um, but I do want to credit the, the staff for coming up with, what, um, I think Mr. Hopcroft and I thought was a, um, a good, a good waypoint for us to be at for, for the remainder of this year. It's obviously a little bit of an odd situation because we're already in February and graduation is coming up in June. So that's, I believe, why the urgency, um, to, to move this forward, um, came up. So, um, I just, uh, we, we, at least in, oh, I think Mr. Nixon is sharing his screen.
Oh, just, th- this is what you're describing, right?
Uh, ye, I believe so, yeah. Um, all right. Sorry. It just surprised me that it suddenly popped up. Um, I, but I, I, I think, um, what I wanted to say was, you know, we were fully in support of, of this waypoint, understanding that it's an imperfect waypoint, but gets us to, um, being able to provide guidance to, to students for the remainder of this year. Um, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Ellen Emma to say anything more, but it was a, a two to zero vote, um, in support of the policy subcommittee, um, for this, um, proposal.
Thank you. Um, so I'm, uh, happy to field questions. I, I'll give the very abbreviated version, um, at that, you know, we have talked about this before, um, Dr. Matthews is right that, you know, by the time, uh, Desi issued guidance, it was right before, um, it was in December, right before the break. Um, and we, we do feel an urgency, um, to move forward. At, as I shared previously, we have very few students that are in this situation where they have not yet met the competency determination. And just as a reminder, we are obligated, um, to do two different things for students to graduate. One, they need to meet our local requirements. And then two, we also need to set, i.e. you need to vote, um, to set a competency determination. And the purpose of that is to, it's, it's very different than our local requirements, which, expects more years of schooling, et cetera. But this falls in line with what is written into the law around, um, students meeting the same criteria that was previously measured by MCAS. So, we met, we've talked about it, um, uh, we were, uh, you know, we've gone back and forth on different ideas and certainly, um, uh, the way that it sounds now, what they are signaling now is we can probably expect more, guidelines or expectations. And we're not sure, you know, what that will look like as they're trying to sort out who actually has the authority to oversee this. Is it the legislature? Is it Desi? Where will that come from? We're not sure. Um, so it, it didn't make sense to us for two reasons. One, we are coming up on graduation for these students and we want to be as fair as we can be, given these last minute changes, um, which took effect in January. And we also want to be mindful not to bring people through a process. Um, now that then we'll be, you know, could be drastically different in six months, depending on what guidance or expectations come down for us. Um, so it, what we are recommending at this point is what matches what the expectations are around the regulations. Um, so we are recommending that this be, students have, uh, passed English in grades nine and ten. And our math, which is stag nine and ten, which is statistics, trigonometry, algebra and geometry, um, that students have either met those or the equivalent. We are also, you know, always aware that students move in from other towns, states and countries. And we want to make sure that there is a way for them to meet this as well. And then at least one, um, a little bit different with science with what used to be the MCAS, um, was that there were different science tests. Um, so we are saying, and this is in alignment with the, law as well, the either introductory or higher, the physics, the biology or the chemistry. Um, and then we also just wanted to be very clear, this does not pertain to any senior, who either passed the MCAS or passed any of the retest up until November because, the new law took effect in January. So anyone who already passed, this does not apply to. This is simply for those students who need to meet a competency determination before this June. So I will stop talking and take any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Nixon, I see your microphone is unmuted.
Well, I, I'm just thinking about process here and what, I, I want to be clear what it is you all are looking for from the school committee tonight. Um, the introductory paragraph, I think, describes this as a certification that was in quotes. Um, we later are calling this, it's sort of our own in-house competency determination. That's how I think of it, Dr. Ellen Emma. So are, are you looking for a motion to accept the recommendation and to adopt, the district's competency determination for the class of twenty twenty-five as presented? Does that sound, I'm not making that motion. I see Ms. Bergstrom as her hand up. I just wanted to be sure where we're trying to get to in this conversation.
Thank you. Desi has told us that the certification is considered a, vote by the school committee is the certification of our local.
Got it. So our vote is the certification, but we are voting to accept the recommendation and adopt the competency determination as presented for, for the class of twenty-five only.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, mine's real quick. I just wanted to, um, let the committee know that WinPAC also had some questions around this and, um, were involved, um, at a higher level in asking some questions around it and making sure that, they were comfortable with it for students with disabilities. And the draft of this has been circulated both to PAC and, DAC. I have not heard back from either of them following their initial input. Dr. Ellen Emma, have you heard anything back from them since they've received it as well?
So I did have an opportunity to, um, check with, uh, Amy Moy, who had, um, brought it forward and we had a good conversation about it and, um, she said that they felt very comfortable. It sounds like the concerns were coming from the, um, area, which, uh, totally understandable that this could be something that, if a student who is in our, you know, they, uh, will stay with us until they're twenty-two in our extended programs as they need that support, that if there was a competency determination that was being set that would, um, prohibit them from having those extended services that they need. Um, but given we're still following, and this is the part that, you know, it was confusing for everyone. It's obviously still confusing as they're trying to sort out, who's actually in charge of, who will give us the guidelines, but, um, the, the regulations, around this haven't changed. So when you look at that new regulations section on the screen and what's in bold, um, that, those are the same. So it has to be students that would be taking, um, these courses that we've laid out at the bottom and be able to pass those courses. So certainly students that need, more support to be able to do that, which is often, say, our students who in the past may have taken the alternate portfolio with the MCAS. Um, they wouldn't be receiving the competency determination, um, and be, um, out of the ability to access those, um, services that they need until twenty-two. So it sounded like once people understood that, um, that there, there didn't, no further concerns came my way.
Thanks very much for sharing that and clarifying that for them as well.
Um, I just had a quick question about, um, on the second page, where it says that if, as students have not met the required passing grades, they may enroll in summer school. And I guess is that for is, for one of the courses mentioned above or? Just didn't understand.
No, right? And that's definitely something we would have to, I mean, we don't typically run summer school in Winchester. So, um, these would be pieces we would have to work through with individual students. We have had students in the past take courses, for, you know, for their transcript or for other reasons, if they hadn't passed something per se in neighboring districts that have summer school. So we would have to work with individual students to make a plan for them to get there, but it would be to be able to meet one of these areas, if for some reason they hadn't. Thank you. To be honest, at this point, if a student hadn't met these areas, they'd also, um, have, we'd have concerns about them meeting local requirements that they also need to graduate. So it would be something that we typically, the high school does a nice job of working with kids on making a plan for that.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, I thank you, Dr. Ellen Emma. I, um, I apologize if it's, if you're arguing against this, I may, I assume I'm glitching out, but I missed a little bit of what you said. Um, but I, but I know in our, um, policies subcommittee, uh, conversation, you shared a, a ballpark sense of how many students are affected by this, because I know it's just this year and just the kids that, um, don't have a competency determination from their MCAS. Um, but just for those watching, can you just give a sense of the scale of people this policy applies to?
We're in the single digits. So.
Yeah.
Recognize how fortunate we are. Many districts are really grappling with this as it's a much bigger number of students have had a, how to solve this.
Thank you. I think that's important context.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Chair. Um, you're muted, but I saw you nod. Okay, I'm winging this, folks. Um, I move to accept the recommendation, uh, for adoption of, uh, Winchester's competency determination for the class of twenty twenty-five only, representing our local certification pending requirements or guidelines to come later from Desi, for subsequent graduating classes.
That's a great winging it, Mr. Nixon. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. All in favor, um, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft? Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. So.
You, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thanks so much for your work on this. I think, uh, it's obviously a short timeline and we appreciate you being able to turn something around that, uh, is, considered and thoughtful. Um, I think, I, I just want to make one other quick point, which is that we did sort of, I, I, I think it's important to note that you did actually go out and, and network with other districts as well and sort of, you know, decide to do it in this particular way as opposed to maybe some of the other thoughts and ideas that came up in the very short timeframe for pulling it together. So thanks for that work as well.
Thank you. It was a great team effort and certainly, um, you know, depending on what comes forward, we may look at this with a much wider lens, going forward, but wanted to, yeah, the timeline was short and mostly to be fair. mostly to be fair to our students who are, it, it would be unreasonable to announce some new expectations a couple of months before they graduate, we felt. So, thank you.
Thank you. And also to the policy subcommittee for being able to turn that around. So appreciate it.
In the absence of our, our chair, we still got, so thank you.
Charged ahead.
We missed you, Madam, Madam Chair.
So just merely showing that there are, that there are lots of people who can carry these. Um, let's see. So we have both our presenters here for the Lincoln Chiller and Flatwork Design Update. So if the committee is in consensus, I would just recommend that perhaps we bring, we let them go first. I think I saw a nods, a few nods. So, okay. Dr. Hackett, let's see.
We have voted them to panelists. And with this night, we have Allison O'Neal from Gale Associates Design Consulting Firm, um, to give you an update on the Flatwork Project at Lincoln. Both of these are actually at Lincoln School. And Chris, uh, Hildreth from NV5 to discuss and provide an update on the Lincoln Chiller. So I'm sure it's, you, you can determine who goes first. But you both have, um, you do have the ability to share your screen if you want to share anything.
Okay, uh, it doesn't matter to me who goes first.
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair? If could, if, if Allison could go first, since there were some options about, uh, HVAC equipment being on the roof or on the ground, I think it'd be helpful if Allison take the first crack since, um, her scope includes the site work and flatwork. If that's okay with Allison.
Fine with me.
I yield to Allison.
Okay. So I'm going to share my screen.
And Allison, as you're doing that, the, the school committee last reviewed this work at a meeting in March of 23. We went through every single sheet, um, in pain, somewhat painstaking detail. So, but the membership of the committee has changed a little bit since then. So not everybody is familiar.
Okay. We don't have to go in as much detail as you did before. Uh, but I was just going to give a high level explanation and then if we want to dig deeper, we can. Uh, so to give you a little background, um, this project came up because Peter Lawson had mentioned that they were spending a lot of effort removing snow at the Lincoln School and dedicating a lot of resources to that, um, particular school during a snow event, which wasn't able to cover the other schools as well. Um, and also because they were experiencing some concrete deterioration across the site, uh, related to some of the sidewalks settling and creating some differential, um, situations between the panels, which were causing tripping hazards. So they were grinding, um, down the panels and also dealing with, uh, railings that were embedded in the concrete. And then when the water would get in there and freeze and pop the concrete off, um, there was some maintenance that was having to be ongoing, you know, pretty consistently on the site. So, um, that's kind of how we were brought into the, to the, um, to the project. And so we, we ended up doing an evaluation and, um, put together some plans for some improvements. So our documents are on the screen, if you can all see. Um, these are all the drawings that we put together, some civil landscape and some structural drawings. Um, the mains, oh, the main staircase is also a, a big part of this. Um, the granite stairs at the main entrance, um, were settling out. They hate, they have to pull the granite pieces off and reinstall them and reinstall the grout and all that stuff. So. Um, this is a, just an overall view of the site. Uh, this is Mystic Valley Parkway here, Washington Street. And, um, forgetting the name of this street over here, but it'll be on the plans and just the location map. So when we look at the existing conditions, um, yes, this is the main, main street over here. There's access to this site from all the different streets. But, um, it turned out after we surveyed, uh, the school personnel that not all of the walkways and staircases were really heavily used, but they still needed to be cleared of snow. So when we, when we got all that information back, that's kind of formulated our proposed changes. Um, and they'll go through what those changes are. But this, uh, this walkway here actually takes, um, a long time to clear of the snow. It kind of comes off of Mystic Valley Parkway. There's a few stairs here. And then the, these concrete walkways and staircases also aren't, are not very heavily used from what we were told. Uh, there's an ADA, um, entrance here and also one next to the main staircase here. Uh, and then we also have, um, this walkway and staircase here, which I understand is actually part of the bus drop off, um, operation. So, and these are the access points. There's just so many from the site. There's also a wall in the back near the auditorium here. And I have some pictures I'll go through too, just to refresh your memory as to what that looks like. But this wall was sort of deteriorated and then covered with some, um, plywood. And, um, it tends like some of the kids like to hide back there during recess. So it was like sort of a place that the teachers were having a hard time keeping track of the kids. Um, so this was part of one of our proposed changes and I'll go through what that, what that was. This area over here is, I think, a topic that you've discussed at length. Um, there was a proposed kind of patio area. The flagpole was relocated. Um, there was some outdoor seating for our outdoor classroom space. Uh, and, and part of the reason why that was brought up was because our investing, our evaluation was done during COVID. Um, we are, we actually was going back at the pictures today and seeing like we all had masks on when we were meeting. And, uh, everyone was thinking like, how do we get people back, but then still be able to do our classroom work and outside? So that was kind of where that originally developed and, um, and was thought of. So this is the existing conditions plan. This is just demolition and erosion. We don't need to dig into this one. But this was the layouts and materials plan. So part of what I was just saying was that some of these walkways and staircases weren't really, um, used. So, or what we understood was they were not used. So we proposed, uh, demolishing all of these over here and then demolishing this long staircase walkway here and replacing it with a grand staircase that leads right up to the main entrance of the school. So that was a big, um, a lot of the cost. And then this area too, I have on the first sheet, actually, I'll go back. Oh, actually on that sheet too, I have it. The cost estimates. So the cost estimate for all the work that we put on the plans, and this is schematic design level, was 1,680,000, say. And the cost estimate without this area here. So just basically just doing repairs to the existing conditions in this area and not building this retaining wall and relocating the flagpole and building this seat wall and this whole plaza, uh, was 1,200,000 ish. So the, the delta was worth $473,000. Um, and Meg, uh, White had asked me to put that together so that we could get a sense for how much that area was really costing. We had a geotechnical engineer take a look at the soil so we could understand what the foundation requirements would be for this retaining wall. Because as you know, the site sort of slopes off in this area. So we needed a retaining wall in order to keep this all level, um, in this area. So as I go through this, I want to also go over this main staircase and what we had proposed, um, in that area. So this is just draining and graded, grading and drainage where, um, you just see new, um, the way that the land would change, um, based on this new work. And just some details here. This would be this new main staircase that would come straight off the building and down that hill to Mystic Valley Parkway. This is kind of what we would be looking at for that type of a structure. And these are just, um, some details. This is on the landscaping plan. So this shows, um, different hatches down here for the different types of plants that we would propose for this, uh, this renovation. And just those details here. And this is the structural work. And so the way the structural drawings are set up is we have this overall plan and this plan is broken down into sections. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six areas. And so each drawing is a close-up of, of the area. Um, and so what this drawing shows is, is just repairs in this area with the playground um, and this side entrance to the school. This is where there used to be, I think, a pull-in area for buses, like a long time ago before the, the renovation and in the 1999 or so, 2001. Um, so this is just showing swalled concrete is SC and CC is cracked concrete. And that would be, uh, how we denote where we found a defect that we would, um, be instructing the contractor to repair. Um, VG is vegetative growth that just needs to be cleaned up. Like FS is failed sealant. So just kind of a simpler way. And there's a legend on the drawings. So if you're ever looking at them, you can kind of check out what that is. And then this little hatched like jagged pattern is, is where we would propose to demolish those walkways. So we'll see that in the other plans here. So, um, one of the things when we talked about moving the flagpole was the feedback from the school was that, that was a meeting spot when you'd have a fire drill or something like that. And there, it gets kind of crowded in that area. So that was why we had said, okay, if we're going to do this plaza area over on the other side of the main staircase, we could put the flagpole there. It'd be more room for the kids to congregate. So that was the thought behind that one. And again, so just failed ceiling, some concrete repairs that need to happen. Um, just grinding the uneven surfaces like Peter had told me that they just continue to do because it looks like the original concrete walkways were just laid on compressible materials and not really, um, sound concrete. It's like, um, structural fill. So those materials seem to have settled over time. And so that's why you're seeing the uneven, um, surfaces. This is the main entrance and we actually have a close-up of this on S106. So I'll go over that when we get to that drawing. And then this shows the main staircase that comes down onto the sidewalk at Mystic Valley Parkway. We would propose to replace this area here, uh, in front of the stair because we just kind of be tearing this up and there's some uneven areas here. And this is the, this is that classroom sort of like congregation area that I just explained what was behind the thought of, of doing that. And then the new flagpole, I think there was some lighting with the new flagpole and. Um, this retaining wall, I think, is pretty expensive to get that because it's kind of on a slope. So it's, needs to be dug deep and just ends up adding up. So this is kind of continuing around the school counterclockwise, if you're looking at the plan. So this is this, uh, exit on, on the main street side. And there's this walkway. There's a lot of the railings that are embedded in the concrete, um, that have spalled off. And I'll, I'll show you some pictures in a, in a few minutes of what, like, so this is spalled concrete 10 square feet because the water has gotten into where the railing is embedded into the concrete and it just has frozen, popped off the concrete. So that's just continuing to happen. Um, so that would be repaired and we have a new, um, detail for that and a new detail for how new railings would be mounted for the brand new staircase. That wouldn't, um, be as problematic as the ones that are on site right now. This is the area in the back of the building that I told you the kids are hiding in here and just, you know, was unsightly at one time. But now it's kind of covered up with, with plywood. I think it's still like this. So we were proposing to cut this wall down at an angle so that it gets, gets rid mostly of that area where you'd be hiding. And so this is kind of what it looks like if we were to, to see the finished condition. And this, this area is like the demolished area. So you'd be taking away quite a bit of the, see this, um, hatched area here. So you'd be taking our way of a bunch of this here. So. If anyone has questions, as I'm going, please just interrupt me and we can talk. This is the main staircase, uh, the where the, the grand stair right now. Uh, oh, so it was 2001 that it was constructed, uh, the renovations. And what's happening here is the, those granite, um, stairs are displacing. So when they displace, it causes a tripping hazard and then it allows water to get in and freeze and pop off even more. And, and so it's causing that. And like Peter had told me, sometimes they have to like pull the whole tread off and clean it up and then reinstall it. And what he said was, there's actually not like foundations underneath this. And this is why he thinks that this is being a problem for so long. So we proposed taking them off. And so what would happen is you take them off and catalog them. So you know where each tread goes and then there would be new foundations. And on the next sheet, you can see, um, this is like the foundation plan. So this would be like kind of looking down from a helicopter, um, looking down on it. And then these would be the new foundations underneath the treads. And the way they lay out is we'd essentially have, I'll show you. We'd essentially have like a new foundation here. So it would support kind of like this. Would support each one of these treads on either side. And that's what we're trying to show on the other sheet. They'd show, it would support this one and this one and this one and this one and so on. So that way we wouldn't have continuous settlement. We've done these before, um, several locations, these grand staircases, um, with new foundations. So this sheet is a detail sheet. Um, we're showing a new detail for the railing base. Just basically cleaning this out, making sure that we have the traffic coating, um, uh, over the sealant to try to like really lock in that, um, that detail. Some of the details had like grout in them and then no waterproofing on top. So that was the idea there. And we have just typical concrete and crack repairs that we use all the time. And then the granite steps, uh, repointing details. And, uh, more details about the foundations and the capstones. This was the, uh, alternate railing mounting detail that I was telling you about. It's just mounting to the side and the water would tend to run over it. We'd waterproof this, of course. But it would be, um, a detail where you'd have adjustability to be able to replace the railing. Um, there's a sleeve here. There's a detail nine. Um, here it is. This is a close-up of, of what we were proposing for that railing. This is that seat wall where kids could like sit here or they could sit here. Um, and then this was the retaining wall at the classroom area. So sort of schematic. So that, those are the drawings. And then if I could just go through a few photos, this is just to refresh, I know you all, all know the school well, that, uh, sometimes it helps to bring photos up. So this is the view looking from Mystic Valley Parkway up. And this is the existing wall. So we'd be cutting with that new staircase, we'd kind of be cutting into here. And then the staircase would come, come down the front. And, and this tree, I can't remember what happens with this tree, but this tree was affected for sure. I remember Chris bringing that up earlier.
We're going to lose at least one tree, but, but we're putting, but there's beautiful stuff going in. So it's net positive.
Sometimes we have to affect things that we don't want to affect. But, um, so this is kind of just a view of that slope. So you can see how that, that slopes down. And, uh, oh, this is that, that, um, proposed classroom area. And, um, there were some street, tree stumps out there. I don't know if they were using it as an outdoor class space at the time, but this is, um, this was just there the way it was in 2020. And, um, so that, what would happen is this new, that new wall would sort of curve in, if you can see my cursor. And then that new space would come out here. And that's where I was, I was talking like the retaining wall. Since this slopes down here, the retaining wall would be needed to, to retain that new space, um, because we'd be leveling that off. And another view, this is a view of that staircase that. And another view, this is a view of that staircase that that Peter said um, takes a long time to clear the snow off of. And actually, the last few snow torments, he said um, they were feeling it because they had to spend so much time at this school um, clearing the snow and they were needed elsewhere. I just called Peter today just to see if there was any updates on, you know, the logistics that we talked about back in twenty twenty. Oh, this was um, this is an old photo of something that didn't get incorporated into the plans, but they were trying to shoot our landscape architect had proposed proposed this amphitheater in this area. And then here we are with all of our masks on. But this is the area on Main Street and just a view of that. Um, if you can see this photo, this area has been repaired previously. But if you stand over here, you can actually see underneath and there's a void underneath the concrete. So you can see where the soil is actually settled below this area. Um, so we had that being replaced. Just where that compressible soil had just settled out and this is a view from that Mystic Valley Parkway side with these walkways that we would propose to demolish. Um, and then there would be no more snow removal there. Uh, you know, obviously taking out these stairs in this walkway here. Yep. And this um, these concrete areas, there's a few, this flagpole area, if the flagpole were to move, we'd take that and make that back into a grassy area. Um, and some of these, some of these walkways would be eliminated. And then um, you know, the playground, if you wanted to put new play equipment here. Um, this is the A D A entrance. And just repairs in this area, basically, um, new landscaping. Um, this area we talked about in the back of the building. And this is just an overall of the the field back there. So. And one, I had put aside a few photos to show you. Didn't pop up, but hold on, we're gonna find it.
That's an ominous background you have for this discussion, Allison. What are we to, what are we to make of this?
Microsoft, I don't know. It's pretty, sometimes it's odd. I don't know why this isn't coming up, but hold on a second here. Oh, here.
Kids won't be hiding with that bop wire anymore. I'll tell you that.
Popped up over here again. There we go. All right. Sorry about that. So this is an example of what I was talking about with the railing embedment in the concrete curbs, uh, the the cheek walls next to the stairs. And this is like a granite tread here. And this is a uh, just like a concrete panel that's um, that's supported on grade. And so this is happening just everywhere. I wanted to just show you a few photos of what's happening. And then this was like an example of where the panels are kind of settling. And so Peter Lawson had said like, they go out and just kind of grind this down. So there's not as much of a a lip there for someone to catch their their foot on. This is just another example of the tripping hazards trying to show the difference. And um, this right here is actually sealant that was in between that joint. It's come out. Just another one, uh, railings. And those were the
And can I just jump in, Madam Chair, on that last picture Allison was showing? I I do want to say something since Pete Lawson's not with us tonight. D P W every summer does yeoman's work. Chipping away at this loose stuff, they use a cementitious filler. They work through July and August, so it does not look like this in the first week of school. But by Halloween, it looks like this because the, there is movement. Um, and and the product they're using isn't meant as a permanent fix. So it it's not for their lack of trying. This is happening because we just don't have adequate foundations underneath. And if you can see a somewhat to the right there in that cheek wall that that picture Allison is showing, there's a vertical crack. It's going right into the nosing of that stair. That's very sort of typical throughout the site.
That's right, Chris.
They, D P W works really hard to make this look as presentable as possible. And it's impressive what they're able to pull off. But these patches are less and less um, resilient, um, and the deterioration is accelerating um, every year. Madam Chair, if Al- if Allison's done, I was gonna ask her, can she pull up C one O one? Um, I just wanted, I wanted to make sort of a quick comment.
Sure, please go ahead.
Um, Allison, if you can pull up your site plan that kind of shows the meandering pathways, um, yeah, a- as much as the the folks at D P W would appreciate, you know, not having to shovel as much snow. Um, Allison, if you can sort of zoom in a little bit on the right side, that's perfect. Uh, it as you zoom in there, it sort of show those paths down to Mystic Valley Parkway. I want the committee to understand that um, these, the Lincoln is a historical building, as I think you all know. Um, these paths are not, um, not only are they not original, they were built during the renovation like ninety nine or two thousand. We did go back and look at the original drawings uh, from the nineteen thirties. There was never this sort of cow path approach um, that left us with these meandering pathways. Um, so this idea of the monumental stair on axis is very much in keeping with that sort of Bozart style of architecture. Um, this approach, this design approach is something capital planning was very much in support of. Let me explain what that means conceptually. Originally, because miss Mr. Lawson kept coming to capital, he would say, I need fifty grand, I need sixty grand, I need eighty grand to fix this, that and the other. We were chasing our tails. Um, it would be considerably more expensive if we were to rip up all of these meandering pathways, all the cheek walls, the of these treads and risers, they're all granite. New handrails for us to rip everything out and rebuild it the way it sits today, we believed at the time would be more expensive. So the idea here was actually to get rid of, at the end of the day, pathways that go down to maybe twenty parallel parking spaces on Mystic Valley Parkway. And let's just simplify with that monumental stair. Um, so we think that this is a simplified approach. Yes, there will be less snow removal. Um, but there will simply be less concrete, less granite, um, less, less unsuitable soils we have to worry about, um, you know, structurally. The other point that I just want to make with regards to that outdoor classroom, and I don't know if if Allison can zoom in a little bit on that. I, there's sort of, there's two components to this. The veteran committee members will recall that for years, we've struggled with the number of little feet that run around on this site and the limited amount of square footage we have for them. We have from time to time talked about the possibility of artificial turf on the backside of the school because the grass just won't grow, given all the little feet. So I I want the committee to understand sort of where the genesis of this was. Th- there was interest because students do gather at this corner of the school when weather you know, permits. Some, you know, with with teacher observation. There was an interest in sort of expanding this corner. So that was where the idea came from, simply the retaining wall. So that's thing one. Thing two was, well, if we were to do something like that, can we make it more of a space, more of a place? So you'll see that kind of herringbone, the pavers in Allison's image. And then this idea of poured uh, concrete stepped retaining wall to the bottom that you see here. Uh, and that kids would be able to sit on the wall there up on the top. So there was this idea of creating a plinth or or more sort of space at grade as a base. And then this idea of what could we add to it to make that more of a special place for kids? Based on P M and C's estimate, Allison, from like July of twenty three. I think between the brick pavers and and the seat walls, that was worth about a hundred and twenty five, hundred and thirty. And that was construction cost, not project cost. So so there are elements of this. If the school sees value in us creating more horizontal space for kids to be, um, one could look at this and say, maybe we take off some of the uh, the elements that make it more special, we still can sort of create more of that horizontal space. So I don't, I don't want the committee to think it's binary. The last point is the flagpole, uh, it is leaning. I haven't measured to see how much it's leaning, but it's a, it's a fiberglass pole with a a resin. And it's really suffered, um, uh, the the part of the pole that faces the the afternoon and setting sun, the resin's gone. You can actually see the exposed fiberglass in the structure of the pole. The pole, of course, is also mounted on um, concrete, which as we all now know was poured on unsuitable soil. So there was some, some feeling that that flagpole is not long for this world. So if it was gonna move, could it be moved to a place where there's enough hardscape in this instance, you know, whether it's brick pavers or concrete? So you can actually have kids gather rather than step in, you know, what quickly becomes mud in the fall and spring. So I just want to offer a little bit of sort of background on the uh, the thinking there. Oh, and maybe the last comment is no request from an amphitheater came from your parent's school or school committee committee. I think that was a landscape architect thinking big. So I thank you, Allison, for pointing that. I just want to be very clear. Nobody was requesting an amphitheater. It would be cool, but that was that was nothing we ever were sort of interested in pursuing.
Yeah, thank you. I I think I grabbed that um, PDF with the photos in it from a previous presentation. That was a brainstorming session. But thank you also because I had briefly forgotten about the need for the bigger space for them to congregate. So that was great that you brought that up. Are there other questions from committee members or?
I guess my only question might be for Chris. So in the, that outdoor sort of, and Dr. Hackett, in that outdoor sort of classroom space. I guess my first question is, is it necessary to the design? And if we're expanding and investing in play space at Lincoln, if it's, if it's an additional element, is that the highest use area to be expanding play space at Lincoln? We've heard a lot of conversation over the years about um, improvements to the back area and the playground spaces that already exist. So I'm just curious about that.
I think I'd say, I I'd love to hear what Dr. Hackett thinks about it. Um, all I can tell you, Ms. Bergstrom, is there, there was, when we were there on a couple of occasions, you know, there, there were kids just sitting on the ground. We heard from the assistant principal that that they they can't sort of be in that area when it's wet. Um, obvious reasons, the ground's wet, um, and and that if it were a larger area, you know, they could actually have a class out there. Now you don't need brick pavers to do that. You don't necessarily need a, you know, poured concrete sort of step wall. I I think some of us saw not long ago, I I think there's a picnic table that that it must grow legs because it moves around. I think I saw an eight or ten foot picnic table parked in that inside corner where Allison showed us tree stumps today. So um, you know, even if we did something very simple, which was to simply sort of expand to 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 give us more horizontal space. Um, even if it's as simple as just a, the, a new concrete walkway, you know, to make that ninety degree turn. Uh, we could certainly provide something simple like some wooden tables. Um, but again, that just gets back to what the building based team feels is valuable. I I would just say, I really feel like we were just being responsive to, you know, to their interest. And as, as you well know, as a veteran member of Ms. Bergstrom. This conversation about turf um, has been going on for many, many years. It's incredibly expensive. Also comes with a number of in in inevitably, there are concerns, environmental concerns and you know, M S D S concerns about what are you filling the turf with? And we don't like chrome rubber, et cetera. And at the end of the day, lots of little feet. Too little square footage, and that's why the grass doesn't grow. So that that's, we just sort of seize this as an opportunity. If there was a place to sort of make space, this would certainly be an opportunity. Um, but the point I made earlier in breaking down some of those elements, if we were to take out the brick pavers and the poured concrete seating walls just on those uh, trade costs, Allison, I think that's worth around a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. I I just don't, I want to suggest, I don't think it's a bind, it doesn't need to be a binary decision between what you see here or nothing. It 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 could be something. Um, but what that needs to be or could be, I think should just respond to what you know, Dr. Hackett and the school based team feels would be, you know, helpful. And to your point, Ms. Bergstrom, whatever that is and what that costs, how do you value that versus some other improvement elsewhere on the site?
I believe I was out there walking one day or walking into a meeting and um, there were just some students and a teacher just standing along the walkway that's currently there. Um, having a little bit of outdoor, outdoor time, outdoor classroom discussion time, it appeared.
I think some students sit right next to the window and make faces at Dr. Hackett when the weather's nice.
Which is the best part of my day. Um, so I would just, uh, now that we've been there for a year, I've had a chance to really kind of see how the the building is, gets used and the outdoor spaces get used. Um, I think you, I think you all know that we are putting, installing a new playground for Lincoln next year. We're also gonna be doing a swing set um, in the lower, uh, the playground that's to the left of this. What I think, as much as anything, what I see in this area, and generally I just see like knees down. But what I see in this area is uh, parents and students are gaining prior to school. It's a great gathering spot. Um, there are so many walkers, uh, families who walk with their children to Lincoln School. So this particular area for students and uh, who go in through that main entrance um, is where they gather. So I I think they brought a wider space like this and you're, you know, irrespective of the cost, but a, an area where people can gather, they're doing it now. Um, I think would be good. Um, I think it would give a a nice feel to the uh, to the opening um, of the building and and the actual site itself. I have to tell you that is, I'm pretty excited about the grand staircase. I've got a lot of scenarios about me walking down um, with trumpets playing kind of thing. Um, but uh, that like, take that up at a, at another time. Um, but I do think in the area that's what, that has a wide, flat surface, uh, maybe some benches or some seating would be used. I don't know that it would be used as an outdoor classroom. Uh, that particular location is kind of removed somewhat from, from the classrooms. And to get out there, you'd need to be going out to the front entrance. So you'd be going out through the uh, that small lobby area that's on the, on the um, McCall side. I would just also add that leadership has also changed at Lincoln from the time that this was the, we talked about. So I've not had a full discussion with the principal about this.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hopcroft, do you have your hand raised?
Thank you. Um, uh, uh, thank you for the presentation. This is helpful. We've, we've seen a lot of this a number of times, but it's, it's always great to get down into the the nitty gritty and and uh, uh, see uh, you know, the footings are really installed and so on and so forth. Um, yeah, it looks to me like, you know, there's one point two million dollars of pretty essential work that needs to be done to bring up. Um, you know, bring this up to to an acceptable standard and um, and 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 I do find persuasive the argument that um, you know, both the snow removal and just the cost of concrete and and granite treads, that it's cheaper to build the uh, and more historic to build the grand staircase. Um, so I think that's um, actually a great improvement. Um, you know, from a financial point of view as well as from an aesthetic point of view and a usability point of view. I like what uh, Mr. Nixon um, suggested. So so one point two, I feel like needs to be done uh, here. So we're really talking about the remaining four hundred and seventy three thousand. Um, and and you know, the the amphitheater is a neat idea. Uh, you know, I get the, originate, you know, we originated with fact and and that's great. Um, I do like this notion though, that of not thinking about it in a binary fashion and saying, you know, could we itemize some of this? Um, that the, when I think about our schools in general, um, you know, Lincoln has got to have for the elementary schools, you know, the smallest um, footprint or or if not, I think it is the smallest. Um, but I think about any of the other schools. And so you know, the ability to maximize a little bit more level space, um, whether it's for for people gathering before or after or um, or or if there was a case where people could use it. Um, I think would be a good investment if we think it's affordable and if building leadership thinks it's, it's usable. Like just given how tight it is, I think it's worth um, considering that, uh, certainly. Especially because if we're thinking that it's a, it's, you know, some portion of the four seventy three and not all of it. If there's a way to you know, break some of that down. Um, you know, when, when I think about the scale, what needs to be done. You know, the equipment that would be on site, um, you know, the the concrete, the all the work that's done, you know, I I I wonder. I mean, that retaining wall will cost some money. Uh, it's really putting, you know, it looked like it was stamped concrete, so not even um, necessarily brick in there. Also, there may be ways that there's Also, there may be ways that there's efficiencies of doing it all at once. Um but uh but, you know, again, I would defer to. You know, you know, the the incremental additional cost on that and and whether the building leadership thinks it it would be helpful, but. It 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 certainly seems if there was a site to add a, you know, a few extra square feet of level space, this would be the site, so. I've supported certainly some one point two million and I know we're not making a decision, but I think we'll do this fairly soon.
I I it might be helpful, um Chair, if we uh give. Um Mr. Hildes the chance to talk about uh the chiller and because part of the question, I think around this, uh it could be affected by. The placement of the chiller, this but there was big conversation about whether to put it on the actual on the roof or I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nixon or. Anybody um that the location that we're talking about with the outdoor classroom is in and around where a chiller would go, you the unit would go on the ground.
It it would, I my understanding it would be impacted and maybe Allison can zoom in if she still has this up, but. I think Mr. Lawson had shared with us last year uh the notion of locating if if it was ground mounted equipment on that inside corner. But not an insignificant size, and of course it needs to be offset from the building and it needs its own sort of enclosure, so we're talking about. Um Allison, if you move your your cursor a little bit to the right. Right there, right there, yeah. I I think this is. I think this is where Pete was talking about, but it it's um.
Yeah, I think you're correct because the door looks like it's just around the corner.
I don't want to steal Mr. Hildes' thunder, but.
No, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna rain on the parade, but. Yeah, there was, there was discussion with Pete about putting the the chiller um I at grade. Um there are certain advantages. It being not on the roof, you know, it's support, you don't have to worry about, you know, supporting it up on the roof. Though there is equipment up there already and the proximity to the where we want to tie it into the existing. Cooling equipment, uh which is interior to the building is an advantage. But we found, we did a study back in twenty three comparing the two. We didn't spend a lot of time on this, we just really just did a. Quick cost comparison and it wasn't. That much of an advantage, it was. You know, in the range of, I'd say maybe quarter of a million dollars on that and a high end. Could be potentially saved. Um we did proceed. Under um. Uh Meg's uh. Direction as well as Pete's to really on the design, we furthered it in design development. And really didn't focus on this anymore, this location. We really just pursued the roof. I think there was a lot of, you know, discussions in town about this location. And I can see that, having seen Allison's presentation and your discussion, that is. Probably not desirable to have it there, so I don't think, you know, you you certainly can. You know, weigh the option. And um consider it, but I don't think there's a lot of um. Push in town for it and from what I've seen.
And we and we did not take a, I don't think we took a vote, Chris, uh I but I I I remember we had a meeting at Winchester High School. When Mr. Lawson did come and and talk to us about it, and I feel like the. The consensus of the committee, well, again, not a vote, um unless maybe a motion was made by Mr. Hoffcroft, I can't remember, but I felt like we kind of said. All things being generally equal or in the same ballpark, you know, our our preference was certainly to pursue. The roof mounted solution, just understanding we have dunage up there that's tied back to the structure. The dunage, of course, being purposely designed and purposely built for the equipment that's there now, which is different than what you're proposing. Um so, yeah, we sort of asked Pete and Meg to go back and say, let let's let's run the roof option to ground a little bit before we seriously consider a ground option.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. There was a desire from the committee just to understand what it would take to put it onto the roof. Um and and I vaguely recall that there was a question on if the roof could support. Could support the chiller there.
Yeah, so as part of the design development, we did bring in a structural engineer and we. Had them uh analyze, put night shows on the roof. And they um this the the steel that's above the roof, it can be repurposed. For the use of the chiller. But there is um structural. Uh measures we have to take down below in the gymnasium, there's some uh there's steel joists that go across there and those have to be reinforced. But really, in in the big picture, it's really rather minor, the the impact of to structure. So that was, that was a good news. So we've got Brian brought it through uh, you know, when you wanna. I can show you the drawings at some point uh soon, um where the units will be going on the roof. I wanna say it's a good time to share it up. Okay.
Sure, please go ahead.
And Chris, while you're bringing that up, I think the the other point we made, and again, this is a year or so ago, is um, you know. Nothing's free, so we we the the district spent a lot of money back in ninety nine on the dunage that we had on the roof, so even though equipment wears out. Over time, if there's an opportunity to use the dunage up there. Uh wi- without too much considerable additional expense, then in a way we're sort of extending the. The 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 sort of the value of that investment.
Okay, good. Yeah, so as I mentioned, we did a re- a study back in uh early twenty three. Just looking at um. Replacing. The um. Equipment with just cooling. The chiller is twenty feet, which is interior and has a component outside on the roof. It's a split system, so. Um they go together as as a unit, but we're looking at just putting. Combining those two components, the interior one and the exterior one into one unit outside on the roof. Um strictly, we looked at various options. Kind of kind of jump back. To this, we did this comprehensive spreadsheet, so we looked at. Cooling, cooling only, using the existing boilers for heating. Doing a heat pump, there was some interest in town, strong interest in town to decarbonize. Um so we were looked at heat pumps that could be used in conjunction with most of the year to provide heating to the school, all electric. Um using the existing gas fire boilers only in the coldest weather, you know, the. Below. Thirty degrees. Um would be the gas, but majority of hours for heating is in the spring and, you know, fall season, there's mostly hours. This year is a little different than that, of course, uh we've been spoiled the last few years, but. Uh certainly, heat pump is is. A very viable option, we're doing a lot of those um systems now. Um so it came down to looking at option one B, which is to put it all up on the roof. And the option two B was the same equipment, but at grade. As you can see at grade. A rough estimate was almost a million dollars, this being the total install cost. Versus putting it on the roof. At about, you know, one point one, one point two million dollars. So you see, there's. Not. You know, a huge difference between grade and versus the roof mounted.
Chris, can I just send you a check?
The um reinforcement of the gymnasium. That you were mentioning.
Um there was an allotment for during the study, we didn't. Bring in the structural engineer until the. The um design development stage, when we did full. Full plans at design de- development level.
Chris, can I ask a similar question on the ground?
Not included? Sorry, I just tried to understand.
There it did, there was a component of, you know, an allowance for a structure. We didn't have, you know, the full. Uh scope of it, but we did carry an amount for that at the study phase.
So, Chris, I I have the similar question Karen does about the ground mounted option. Was there an allowance made for an enclosure wall of some kind for ground mounted equipment?
Attacks in my brain, yeah, with this.
As I I think originally, like I think originally a year ago, the answer was no, and but but we we sort of acknowledged that. Given the historic nature of the building, we couldn't do just a chain link fence, so some sort of. DM, DMU wall face masonry, that's that sort of thing. And 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 I think Meg Meg felt like it would almost need to be kind of. Conceptually designed by an architect and.
Oh, yeah, uh for that location is very prominent, you know, being. Yeah, important corner Winchester. Uh Main Street car, you know, crossing while your your town buildings. It's just trying to get down to the basement. Okay, right. The orientation here. Um so that we're talking about putting that chiller about right about out here. Okay, and I don't think. Yeah, so here's where the chiller is, the existing where we'd be tying in, you can see the proximity to it, makes it very attractive. You know.
So just to orient ourselves, so this is looking at the front of the building and yes, right.
Yep, and here's where you've been talking about the um the flagpole and. Meeting area out here. Yep. That was the, that was the attractiveness of putting it out here is the proximity to where we wanted to bring the pipes in and tie into the existing. Cooling system. Versus um. They had an architect involved during DD two to. Um because we have to bring piping now through the building, we looked at, you know, impact to ceilings. You know, drywall and things like that shafts to get piping down through. There's a partial plan of the roof. Um these are the the existing units that are on the roof, here being the right above the uh. Gymnasium. So. We would be replacing these with um the chiller heat pump. On this existing distinct steel. Some of the architects, you know, pathways, things that they um incorporate. Get to. Structure.
So is this answering the question about whether or not the gymnasium? Structural support is included?
Yeah, so now into DD, we have, we have done a struct, we brought a structural engineer on board, done a the study. This is their drawings, which show. Um this is our new equipment that we're proposing, the heat pumps and. Hard to see, but there is a, this is the existing, there's a structural frame on the roof, which supports the existing equipment. Um I think they're proposing minor. Work to the steel frame, but in in general, it's all to be reused. But below on the uh gymnasium. There are. Very large truss trusses, you know, which are steel. Girders that go across at these points. And those would have to be reinforced with supplemental steel within them to carry the load. Of the uh new equipment. So what we're doing is we're taking what's inside plus what's outside, so it's an additive load onto the roof. But it's uh very viable to locate them on the roof, there's no issue.
That's terrific to know.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Hopcroft, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I had um, you know, a couple of observations and and questions. Um one, so not too long ago, um. You know, Chairbo and I say and I and Boston and a number of others um went in and uh walked around the space and and inside the gym. I don't remember specifically uh when we were outside, but I remember talking to Mr. Lawson about the size of this equipment. Um and how much space it would take up and 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 I remember, I think him talking about, um you know, we. You know, in terms of the aesthetic and things, and and I appreciate Mr. Nixon's um concern about um having some sort of um. Tech design enclosure, but you know, there's some talk about the other thing that's sort of behind the the library over by Town Hall, um but. Uh but much larger equipment, and as I look at this here. I'm just curious what, the first of the questions is, what are the rough dimensions of this? So these like eight by ten or and there's three of them.
So each one of these is approximately, I'd say, ten foot by twelve foot, and they're probably about eight feet high.
And you'd need all, you'd need all three of them, whether they're on the ground or the roof.
Right, that's correct.
So that's a pretty sizable amount there. Yeah, uh so so that's one one thing. Um uh another is uh when we were inside the gym, I remember those um steel. Um structural supports that you're talking about are completely, they're completely exposed, so. Uh I imagine it would be fairly minimal, um you know, there wouldn't, you wouldn't have to be tearing open the ceiling to do the, yeah.
Right, right, right. Protect the floor, you know, with, because there'd be some, you know, welding of of elements up in the uh steel. We actually had a lift that uh Peter brought in that for structural to get up and measure all the uh structural components. So it's it's relatively uh. I say relatively minor structural impact, right?
Yeah. Um I I remember there's also some talk about um, you know, the door that would probably need to be cut into the bathroom up there. But Mr. Lawson seemed to say that. That's a safety issue and and needs to be put in there regardless of whether we put this up there because there's other equipment his people need to. With up there.
So this is um just saying, this is how uh maintenance gets out onto the roof to service equipment. There's other equipment out there besides the the cool equipment, there's air handlers, they have the brand filters out. This is the boys' bathroom. Um I think it's the second floor.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah, second, yeah, second floor, so they have to take the the boys' room out of um. Use and then they had to get this step. I've stepped out this window uh several times. It's it's a challenge, especially if you were bringing tools and. So the um. Architect, you know, with Pete's recommendation is to. Let's see, we got a drawing here.
And and I'll say, I I kind of took this as a non a non issue for this project because. Uh at least as I understood it from Mr. Lawson, was that this was a safety thing that that we needed to do for his people regardless because of the other equipment.
Here's, here's the, this is being, if you were standing on the roof looking back at the window, the boys' room. Proposed to take this window out, cut the masonry down and put a.
Yep.
Put a door in. There's still gonna be, there is still a difference of maybe twelve inches between the elevation of the roof. And the bathroom floor, so there's still a step there.
Yeah.
But there would actually be a formal door. And that's included in the scope of this part of.
Right. They still have to take the boys, we looked at other locations where it could be and it just. Because of the auditorium is there and it's just. Locations. Limited options.
My my last observation was just, did my math right, the difference in in the two locations is about a hundred and thirty one thousand. So just as I think about our prior conversation um about landscaping, where I do think adding some extra space would be good. I only had a hundred and thirty one thousand, you know, I think, we'll be here first is, and and then I would I would uh consider that um space down there. But I I do think it it, from my point of view. That's a lot to be sending out of, you know, you know, like I'd like to add a few extra square feet of of space for the kids to use down there. Um, you know, three. Eight by twelve by eight foot tall um machines um surrounded by a fence. Um it would would. Would take away more than we would be adding in my estimation um down there, so um, you know, I I kind of think it's. You know, a no brainer that. You know, for the difference of ninety eighty three, which is almost a million to one point one billion, yeah, hundred and thirty one thousand, um. Uh I I, you know, I, I know you guys already made that determination and and that's why we're focusing on the roof. I just, I go through like, making sure we're not. Missing something here or and that we're being uh wise with the uh taxpayer dollars. I I do think it's a strong investment, so. That's it for my question.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I I did, I just.
Like to move things on, we're at eight thirty.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'd just like to move things on along, so we're at eight thirty PM.
Okay, may I speak?
Go right ahead, I say.
I think the door, the door is um an elegant solution and and regardless of us having to do anything on the roof. Okay, I think the door, the door is, um, an elegant solution and, and regardless of us having to do anything on the roof, it's probably something it should have been in, um, in the original design back in nineteen ninety-nine, it is, it is very cumbersome, as Chris said, um, and it, 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 people may be surprised to know because it, it's not a short building, it's a tall building. It, I'm always struck at how many pine needles and leaves get onto the roof of Lincoln because there's, there, it, it's not like they're right up against the building, but if you're familiar with the war memorial down there, um, you know, closer to Winchester Center, the wind carries these needles, and so our DPW staff are getting, getting out onto the roof all the time, they have to, to clear the, the roof sumps or else the, the water backs up, so um, they're, they're in and out frankly all the time, um, so I think that this is smart for safety for them, uh, given all the, the traffic that they go through that opening, and then I, I just to, to, I second what Mr. Hopcroft said a moment ago that, you know, while the, the interest was trying to respond to the building-based team with respect to that kind of outdoor classroom, how can we create some more space for kids? You know, uh, uh, the ground-based solution with this equipment, um, I think I've likened it to parking a twenty or twenty-four foot box truck there, so we, we, we'd literally be taking space away and, and sort of going in the opposite direction, which I'd certainly want to avoid, um, but uh, and then Chris, can I just, I'm just curious to know with respect to that structural work, um, up at the ceiling, but is this just about sort of reinforcing the bottom cord of those trusses? Is that essentially what we're doing?
I don't know exactly, but it is, there is, you know, might be adding, you know, more vertical struts between them.
Got it.
Yeah, um, and maybe right, the bottom cord may get reinforced.
Okay, okay, so that.
It's minimal.
As, as opposed to introducing new structural members, or sort of, sort of adding strength to existing members.
Yeah, reinforcing, yeah.
Cool, great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Dr. Matthews, did you have something?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, as we're sort of approaching the, I think we're now over the one hour mark since we started this set of presentations, and I'm mindful of your admonition about time because we're definitely way behind on the agenda. I just wanted to know what the decision point, I know we don't have a vote to take tonight, but I just want to sort of clearly state for the record what the decision point is here so that, um, you know, especially folks who are in the community who are watching so that they're aware of, you know, sort of where we're at in terms of a committee, in terms of the decision that we need to make around these two potential projects.
So I believe that there is an up, that this is meant to be an update as it has been some time since we have come back to those. Uh, I think we've been talking about twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-one, so this is an effort to, um, uh, capture the major points of that and, um, Dr. Hackett, I see that you have your hand raised, so. And I think the other, um, point is, we do have the capital planning cycle that comes up in the summer, um, as we are familiar with. And I think the idea is to make it to, to have some guidance on what we would like to do with the outdoor classroom area, and then what we would like to take forward towards capital planning in the summer.
That, that's great for me, I mean, I think, I, I don't know if Dr. Hackett, he, he lowered his hand after raising it, so I.
I keep, keep getting recognized and then not recognized, so I'm just gonna wait for a minute until, I, I do have a couple of things to, to just add to this, so I will, but I will continue, Ms. Matthews, I don't want to interrupt.
No, I just, I, so I, that, that's helpful, thank you, Madam Chair, because I think that it, it, from listening to the presentations, what it sounded like to me is that we had sort of two projects, um, and within one of the two projects, we have a sort of higher budget cost option and a lower budget cost option, and I, I think listening to the questions that Ms. Bergstrom and Mr. Hopcroft raised, I wasn't a hundred percent sure about sort of whether we got a clear answer to the, the question of, you know, are there other things in terms of the, the outdoor space at Lincoln that might be more valuable, given the cost of doing this particular, um, uh, potential addition to the project. Um, and then, you know, I think obviously we, we've sort of had um, a, a lot of discussion about sort of what, uh, the options are for, for the chiller project, and so I, I guess I just would encourage us for, for the next time we come, especially if, you know, the EFPBC has, um, been working on this, um, just sort of a clear set of decision points around what the sort of major questions that we need to contend with are, um, it, it sounds like, based on what you said, Madam Chair, that's sort of an accurate representation of where things are at right now. But it would really help me in terms of, you know, getting to our, our decision around this to know, you know, what are the, the sort of decisions we need to make, um, you know, yea or nay on each of the projects, higher or lower budget option? Um, are there any other questions that, that the committee needs to provide guidance on?
May I make a suggestion, your capital rep?
I've been really patient, can I just say a couple of things real quickly?
Yes, because I have a bit to say something, but go ahead.
All, all right, so from my perspective, and only because I've been hearing about, uh, the flake and flat work since the summer of twenty-one when I first arrived, um, this project is long overdue, there's gonna be a decision on this project, I am partial to the Lincoln Building, it is a substantial, from my perspective, landmark, I know you all live here, but every time I drive into Winchester and I just come up to that building, it, it's, it's beautiful, and I, I think it anchors the town, uh, I think it's an important structure, um. All that said, um, I think the dis, I, my perspective, the decision points and what we learned tonight, we did not have any answer to the question as to whether or not the chiller could go, go on the roof. Now we do. Um, and we were, um, kind of, we, I think we were all a little curious about the, uh, the cost of the design of the outdoor classroom. Um, I think Mr. Dixon said it well, um, I think it was, um, that we, you, there were some, uh, aggressive and uh, inspirational designs happening with that particular space. I, I think from, I, I really think we need to make a decision on where the chiller goes. My recommendation would be to put it on the roof, I think it's worth putting on the roof, I think it, it, it would ruin, it would detract from the front entry of the building, especially when we're talking about a staircase, it's gonna be coming up to the, to the front entrance from, uh, from the main road. Uh, and I think that then, that we just have to make a decision point around what we want to do with the outdoor classroom, I am, I don't, I don't think the outdoor classroom is a deal breaker, uh, if we were gonna, if we were going to, uh, make some cost, um, sacrifice, it would be from my perspective, uh, to maybe downscale that, uh, space a little bit, and I think that I think having a chance to look at that, um, and maybe look at some potential options that might allow us to save some money on that, uh, would be a good next step. So for what it's worth.
I think those are great recommendations, Madam Chair, I was just gonna suggest as your capital rep that al- although we're, we hear presentations and we're voting in the summer, department heads are really working hard in the spring to have this ready for capital, so, and, and I expect that, that NV five and their team would have some additional work that they would want to do to be sure they're answering all of Meg's questions and Beth's questions. So, I, I think what, whether it's a vote or a, a motion of consensus tonight towards putting our, our replacement HVAC equipment on the roof, um, making use of the dunage we have today with necessary structural reinforcements, if, if that's what the committee's appetite is, I hundred percent support that. And, and I'm assuming NV five would welcome that direction, and then I think because there, there's even more detail and sort of a broken out cost estimate um, that Allison has with Gail, we didn't see the breakout of the estimate tonight, but so many elements of this project, including the outdoor classroom have been itemized. Um, I think we could, we could easily, you know, following the meeting tonight with some meetings with Dr. Hackett and, and to his point, the new building-based team, uh, perhaps have some conversation about either downscaling or pulling some of those items out, um, if the committee has interest in still finding a way to maximize, um, some lar- larger site area there, um, there's definitely six figures that could come out.
Can't even tell you how excited I would be to hear this go, some kind of vote on this, it would be.
I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Chair.
I was second if I was not.
I'm happy to, I'm hap- recognizing we had multiple options presented, four or five options over a year ago, uh, uh, I, I, and, and this is an air source heat pump, Chris, is that right?
Are you making a motion, Mr. Nixon?
I, I just need to be sure I get the right.
He's getting there, don't interrupt.
It is, it is, they, no, I needed to get a clarification from Chris.
Yeah.
So, um, I moved that the school committee supports, uh, a, an air source heat pump located on the existing dunage at the Lincoln Elementary School with structural support as necessary to replace the failed chiller.
So moved.
I, yeah, I second that, um, just with one confirmation from Mr. Hildreth, um, does, does that motion i- is this gonna be on the existing dunage, or I thought you said you were gonna use partly that, have to expand it.
Exist, existing dunage.
Okay, yeah, I second that.
Thank you, all in favor, uh, Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous for placing or towards the chiller on the roof.
And Madam Chair, with respect to the outdoor classroom, do you feel like we need a vote? Do we need a vote, or is consensus okay that, that Dr. Hackett just worked with Allison and the building-based team to look at some of those elements?
I think with this one, since there's less clarity around what is going on with the outdoor classroom, I would see this more as consensus to allow Dr. Hackett to move forward and Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin to move forward with working with the team.
Would love to.
To flush those out around the outdoor classroom and some cost savings.
Totally support that.
Support of that.
Uh, so is there consensus? I heard some consensus.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I can tell Allison's pretty fired up about it too, so.
My last has to be that this project gets a hundred thousand dollars more expensive with every year that goes by.
Yeah, let's get this done, one way or the other.
Get it done.
And Dr. Hackett, Mr. Marin, when you do this, I would love to address Ms. Bergstrom's question around, you know, sort of usage of outdoor spaces and maximization of the resources that we have, so hopefully we can add that to our consensus.
And of course, I appreciate the addition of heat pumps.
No solar panels, so Mr. Hopcroft, are you okay with that?
That's okay, just.
Okay, all right, just checking, just checking.
So our, our gas-fired boilers.
No, I'm sorry, I am, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, so thank you so much, um, Allison and Christopher, we really appreciate your time, um, and the level of detail that you brought to us, so I think that was much appreciated.
Yeah, very well.
Thank you very much for doing this on short notice, too, appreciate it.
Yep.
That is, yeah, definitely.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you, goodbye.
Goodbye, good day. Um, so next we will return to the, what, um, I believe many in the community are, would be excited about, which is the proposed, oh, whoops, sorry. Uh, need to back up, oh, wait, no, no, we are there, the proposed first day of school uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar year, so Dr. Hackett.
So thank you, Madam Chair, just briefly, um, we, as you know, we are in contract negotiations, we are, um, there are some items within the calendar, I think both, um, the WA and, and we are interested in discussing, but um, next year is, is pretty straightforward from the contract language standpoint in terms of when we start school. Labor Day is the first Monday in September, um, so the and I, I'm not asking for action, not asking for a vote, I'm really basically letting you know and, and through you to the community that the first day for teachers, uh, and the two workshop days would be, uh, Tuesday, September second, and Wednesday, September third. Um, and that the first student day would be Thursday, September fourth. We will work through the rest of the calendar at a later date and bring that back to you, but I know, I, having been here a, a few years now, I know that there's always a lot of interest and anticipation as to when the first days of school will start, so people can plan accordingly.
Thank you, so that was September fourth for the first student day.
Correct, Thursday, September four.
And is there a desire from the committee to codify that, or are we satisfied with just hearing that information?
Sounds like we don't have a lot of options around it, so that's why I heard Dr. Hackett say.
You can extend your vacation a couple of days, so, uh, I'm supportive of it.
The only thing that I would say is, do we want to be able to make a motion to communicate that, that you communicate that out, or it doesn't even feel like we need to do that maybe, but it's if, if you would like, I'm happy to make a motion to, to settle on the dates that you just, uh, you just told us and communicate that out to the stakeholders.
So I would need to touch base with the WA just to, um, as kind of meet and consult on that, just to kind of nail it down, I did let, um, I did let Mrs. Norris know that, um, those would be the dates, and again, the contract language is so clear, so I don't, I don't feel the need to have uh, the action, um, I'll double check with her and we can get that information out.
Great.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Quick question on that?
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
So what we, we, what we often do is once we set that first day, and, and with plenty of time to actually set other PD days throughout the year, we add up those PD days and school days and look at, you know, holidays, et cetera, we can usually pretty quickly figure out when the last day of school is. Do you think that would be coming pretty quickly, Dr. Hackett, and I'm, I'm just thinking, because in some years we, we message out to the parent community, this is the first day, this is the last day, and when we figure out everything in the middle, which we will in two or three weeks, um, we'll give you more detail.
Yes, the short answer is yes, uh, I, we, there is, I don't think there's any reason why we can't bring that back to, at your first meeting after February vacation. The, the only question that, um, and I'll, you can have discussion around this and, and, um, the WA can also kind of contemplate this, but the, the December break, we could have two full weeks off based on where the days fall, or we could go a couple of days in that, uh, run up to actually Christmas Day. Uh, and then, but the following week, I think the New Year's Day is on the Friday, so that following week would be entirely off, um, so that's really the only out, kind of outstanding question in terms of the calendar and the holidays that we would be, or the, or, uh, non-school days. Uh, other than that, the professional development half-days, um, that doesn't really affect too much because we know we have to have them anyway, right?
Right, Dr. Hackett.
Correct.
Right, so.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, Ms. Bergstrom, because I think that was my question.
You change the holiday, it changes the last day of school.
Yep.
So we'll come back to you on the twenty-seventh and you can contemplate that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is the FY twenty-six bu- budget development update. There was a budget subcommittee meeting just yesterday afternoon, morning. Ms. Bergstrom, Mr. Marin? And Dr. Hackett?
Just reading the faces in the room here, Mr. Marin, you wanna you wanna pop up the, uh, presentation?
Waiting for the slides to come up.
I, yeah, that's, um.
I do not have them.
Okay, they are being stared right now. You wanna take this, Mrs. Bergstrom?
I am, there we go. So, um, as you all know, we've talked about this quite a bit, um, really, we are just, um, in the middle of the, the budget timeline, the community feedback and recommendations, um, the survey has gone out, we're gonna talk about, a little bit about that in a bit. Um, to the community members and the parent guardian family community of our, um, Winchester Public School students. Um, we will be closing that survey this Friday, so if anybody is still listening and here with us, we encourage you to, um, fill that out if you have an opportunity to do so. And then we do anticipate at the end of this month that, um, we will have a presentation of the FY twenty-six budget booklet, to which we will, um, continue to invite the town finance committee to attend that meeting and, um, be able to, um, participate in that, uh, discussion as well. And this is where I turn it back to you, Dr. Hackett.
Okay, thank you, so this is just a summary table of the comparison between the current FY twenty-five town meeting approved budget that we are in right now, um, of sixty-six million, one forty-four, two ninety-four and sixty cents, which was a four point six seven percent increase over the FY twenty-four town meeting approved budget. You can see the major, uh, cost categories have broken up into two areas, one is personnel services and the other one is other expenses. Personnel services always is, as you know, uh, the, the, uh, driver of, of our budget. Um, and you can see that we are anticipating a three point five billion dollar increase in personnel services and, uh, only about a two hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar increase in other expenses. Most of our other expenses have been, um, in terms of material supplies, um, professional development have been not only not level services, but actually level funded for the last, uh, several years. Um, and that totals up to a preliminary level services budget for FY twenty-six of just over seventy million And that totals up to a preliminary level services budget for FY26 of just over 70 million or 5.84%. And, Marin, do you want to talk about the community survey?
Yes, I'd be glad to. As Ms. Bergstrom mentioned, the survey launched last week. The final day to participate is through tomorrow. So the survey closes around midnight on Friday. The QR code on the screen or that link that's on our website can be used for folks to take that. If they've already taken the survey, they can use the same link to go back in and rank maybe new thoughts that have been added and that they'd like to add their ranking to. So I updated these stats as of maybe 20 minutes before your meeting started tonight. So these are preliminary numbers, but so far we've had about 700 participants, over 600 thoughts, and a total of over 27,000 ratings. So if you do that math, you get about 38.5 ratings per participant, which is really high engagement. If you recall, from some of our staff survey results, any sort of a ratings ratio over 15 shows really high engagement. So we're really beyond that. And.
It's just going, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I just, the last note here is that I didn't know that the alignment is low. So on the staff survey, we had sort of medium alignment, and here we're seeing a low alignment. And what that means is that there's more sort of polar, it's more polarized in terms of the thoughts that are coming through. It's not as consistent. So there are a lot, there are a lot of thoughts, but there's less alignment in some of where they overlap. Where our staff survey had more alignment in some of those theme areas.
Did you have a question, Ms. Bonnies?
Oh, no, I was just going to comment that this looks great as far as community engagement. And I think that's wonderful, given that I think one of the things that Ms. Bergstrom and Mr. Hopcroft and Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett, the whole budget subcommittee team have been describing to us throughout the season is really going and getting community feedback and taking this month of February to be able to get feedback from the community, from our, from our staff, and then also from parents and guardians about the preliminary level services budget. So this is wonderful to see this amount of participation and thought that's going in. And I personally had worked on the survey yesterday, had filled it out. And I think I was given, I went through, granted, I did have to get up and get my kids moving. But I think I had looked, I had worked through, I was starting to rank them, and I think I came up with maybe about 20 rankings, and then I think it stopped. But then somebody had pointed out to me that there is a little button at the bottom that if you say, keep on ranking, then you can continue to rank. So you can actually go through and work through, work through the 631 thoughts and rank them all.
But yeah, I think it's important to note to our, to our viewing public that you, that is not necessary to get good engagement on this survey. So we are encouraging people to, as they go in, to make sure that the thoughts they put in are a single thought. And that because of the way this survey and the system works, that first 20 that you're being fed is giving you a good engagement and giving us really great data. And I think that's a great lead-in, Mr. Marin, to move to the next slide where we can see that.
Yes, so as part of the survey, we asked some sort of, some more demographic questions upfront. So this is a breakdown of sort of who is taking that survey. And majority of the survey went through Parent Square, which is our current sort of families within the district, so you can see where that ranks higher. And then we also do have some community members that can sign up to receive notifications from the school district through Parent Square. It's about 300 folks within that group that also had access to this. It's also posted on our website to those who have visited that are able to access this as well. And then we ask a breakdown of, if you have a student in the district, which schools are they in? Or are they out of district? Or do you have no students affiliated? That's that breakdown as well. Then we did ask a question on sort of a scale of one to five, how satisfied folks are with the current level funding for Winchester Public Schools budget. And that ranking shows a favorability score 41%, being either a four or a five on that Likert scale. And then the breakdown is to the right. So you can see most folks are kind of in the middle in regards to that question. And then as kind of a takeaway, the tool itself does provide its own sort of AI-generated summary of the global themes it's seeing. I put a paragraph on here and kind of highlighted areas where saying, you know, investing in teachers and curriculum and focus on different curriculum areas, maintaining and improving facilities, especially Morocco, equitable access to quality education and professional development, supporting those social emotional needs and extracurricular activities. And I think that's fine. I think that was it. And so the goal is that the survey will close tomorrow. And we do have the ability to sort of take the staff engagement and the community engagement and compare some of those results. And, you know, we can already see already that there are some similar themes, but then there are also a lot of varying themes that, you know, staff don't see. If it's, you know, selections and sort of availability of certain lunch programs, you know, that staff wouldn't weigh in on, but the community is really focused on. You can see that. It's pretty neat to see. We'll have more information hopefully for your next meeting.
And I think it's important to note here, Mr. Marin, that we're, since the survey hasn't closed, we don't, we're not bringing more information, more data to you about the survey tonight. We're just hitting on a high-level overview right now, and we hope to be able to bring more to you at the next meeting about this. We are getting good information to use towards our 2030 plan, which we also were able to have a conversation about at the last budget subcommittee meeting. So it's nice to have both the staff input and the community input as we work towards our strategic planning. And, Mr. Marin, if you want to move.
Ask Mr. Marin to quick question on the way by here. When you, when you mentioned that comparison with the teacher survey, is that something that Thought Exchange will do? Or is that something that we'll just look at the summary results and compare them?
We both, there are some parts that Thought Exchange would sort of automate for us and present. And I think we also had to sort of dig through those results and do some work on our own.
Okay, because just because Thought Exchange would probably be able to do it much richer, that it'll drill down into all the data that supports that dashboard as opposed to us just looking at the two dashboard items. So that would be great.
So this is the strategic planning framework that we are all familiar with by now, with our focus on teaching and learning, community culture and wellbeing, and operations and systems and support as sort of our larger guiding principles towards our more specific goals that we have for the district. And also in our last meeting, Dr. Hackett was able to bring a draft five-year budget plan to us. The items that made into this plan were all based on the leadership school committee and the initial Winchester Public Schools staff survey. And, Dr. Hackett, would you like to talk about how that all feeds into the recommendations that we see here?
Sure. So these really are, I wouldn't even go so far as to say that these are recommendations. This is kind of mapping out the information we have so far, based on both the staff survey and just the work we've done as administrative team with both leadership internally at the central office and also with the, with the school committee. We had a workshop, what seems like a long time ago now, but it wasn't too long ago. And these, these, some of these items have been in discussion for quite some time. So we obviously need to focus primarily and first anyway on, make a priority focus on FY26. There are some items there, for example, the first two preschool nurses and the multilingual honor support that may end up having to kind of go into the level service budget, which includes services that we are legally mandated to provide. And then you can just see a listing in no particular order and certainly not exhaustive of the items that we are thinking about that would, we, we right now would be leaning toward recommending for FY26. And then the right-hand box really kind of brings out additional items that have been in discussion for the remainder years. And we've kind of think about those as 26 through 27, 27, 28, and then kind of 28 plus. And then the work that we will do now with you and also with staff is to really try to start to further identify items and then really prioritize items in terms of where we think they should fall and with recommendations within the fiscal years that we're talking about. All of this being aligned to our WPS 2035-year strategic plan. So you, you do take a vote. You are scheduled to vote on March 13th. So we have vacation week next week, but we do have a couple of weeks left prior to the 13th to continue the work, to hold some sessions and get some additional feedback and tease out some of the survey data that both from the, from the staff survey and also the community survey, which has been mentioned is closing tomorrow.
And, Dr. Hackett, I also thank you for that clarification. I also wanted to clarify to the committee on the other exercise that we have not gone through with any of these items is how they will impact the budget. So that is yet to come on many of these items as well.
Mr. Nixon, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. Mr. Marin, on a previous slide, you talked about the alignment being low. And then for some of your highlights, actually, before you go, so go forward from here like two or three slides. One more, okay, right here. You think about how to phrase this question. We're asking for community input on this level services budget. We're talking about an operating budget. So when I see maintenance and improvement of facilities, and then particularly reference to Morocco, as we know that that's capital, whether, whether that's a project that's paid for out of the stabilization fund or through a debt exclusion override, it's expressly not operating. Do you have a way, perhaps this is best when the survey closes, do you have a way to sort of extract from the survey responses those that deal with matters that are really about capital budgeting? I think that's still interesting. It's interesting to me. It's probably interesting to the whole school committee. Do you have a way to pull out responses that maybe went a little off course outside the operating realm? And then are you in a position to then sort of reevaluate that, what you characterize as alignment in those things that we would say are very much about the operating budget? Does that make sense?
Yes, I think that piece is, it's sort of more manual. You know, there's kind of this, this part where we have to hone the data, and we did that with the staff survey. We sort of got, we can give guidance, but then you can, you can really put anything as a thought. And so we would then go through and sort of realign those in those categories. You know, like this survey itself, it has a large portion of thoughts that have kind of put in a miscellaneous bucket. And so we have to go through that process of evaluating and categorizing them. And then ultimately seeing if they're related to our operating budget, or as you said, if they're more on that capital side of things. Or some are completely unrelated to the budget, some thoughts that may come through.
And I think that's why, Mr. Nixon, it'll be easier to have those conversations once the survey closes.
Yep.
So I think that's what, the exciting things we have to look forward to.
And a lot of the tools, so that's what we're saying preliminary, because we sort of, it's locked down until that survey is complete. And then it sort of opens up the ability for us to go in and dig through those results.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, the majority of folks don't, either aren't aware of or don't make the distinction between operating and capital. Many people don't realize there's, you know, that's sort of what spring and fall town meeting are for. It's all just money to them. So I, I appreciate the feedback, however we get it, but it would be good, it may be helpful for us to kind of tease that out.
And I see your hand, Mr. Matthews. I'm going to follow up real quick with that, too. Mr. Nixon, one of the things we've talked about, the good outcomes of the survey, maybe areas that we not only learn what people are interested in around our operating budget, but areas that this committee may need to be able to engage better on and educate the community better about both our operations and our budget as well. So the budget subcommittee has been having those conversations as well.
And if it's okay, I'll just quickly, I'll like, thank you. I, you know, I think you're correct, Chris, in identifying that folks don't necessarily make a distinction between those. And I think the other point that's important to make is that in many ways, it's, you know, it's, it's all revenue that needs to be raised by the town, right? So I, I mean, I think we, we may actually not, you know, to Mr. Marin's point about how much time it might take to do that manually, I'm not entirely sure that that's the best and highest use of time. Because in many ways, it's, it's all revenue that we're ultimately asking for from the community. So, you know, I, I understand that the question maybe was phrased in a certain way, but at the same time, I, I guess I just, it's, it's all revenue that we're going to have to ask for from town meeting in one way or another. And I think we can, we can ourselves parse sort of where those things fall on the priority list from, from both sides and do that work rather than making the survey sort of a perfect reflection of the town process that most folks aren't aware of.
Thank you. And, okay, and thank you to the committee for this, or to the subcommittee for this update. And with that, I would move us on to the last report and update item at 9:06. It is the school committee joint meeting with the EFPBC. Hold on, one screen, one window is blocking the other. For February 24th, which would be the Monday after the break regarding the facilities master plan, phase one enrollment study. Dr. Hackett and Mr. Nixon, would you like to talk about this?
I would defer to Mr. Nixon.
So committee members, well, we are, we're, I think, just a handful of days away from being able to release the phase one report, the enrollment study from UMass. That's going to go out to the full school committee, the EFPBC. Our intention is also to distribute it to the select board, finance committee, planning board, the Affordable Housing Trust, Housing Partnership Board, as well as some of the senior town staff who participated in the core group. The 24th is a date that seems to work, I mean, no date is perfect, but that seems to work the best for the most number of public bodies. As this Bolin essay said, this, this will be formally a joint meeting with the EFPBC, no votes to be taken. We imagine about a 20 to 25-minute presentation by the UMass team and then followed by a period for Q and A. We're going to do this remotely, not in person. And our intention is to allow certainly members of the school committee and EFPBC to ask questions. We will be asking members of those other boards that I mentioned, who, with whom we'll be sharing the report. If they have questions, they could perhaps send them in in writing in advance, so we can give UMass a heads up. They might even be able to incorporate that in their presentation. And I think in a, in a Q and A format, either Dr. Hackett or Mr. Marin can sort of moderate in whatever time we have within that hour to field additional questions. I did have a conversation, Madam Chair, with the Chair of the Select Board, because that is an evening when they have a scheduled Select Board meeting. They, they're going to have some conversation about whether they may punt their executive session work, which is typically at the beginning of the meeting. They may do that towards the end, if that makes them available to, to watch the presentation. If they do, I think in respect of their time, we may give them the first few minutes to ask questions. So this just, as best we can, an opportunity to communicate this out, have people understand the process and the results. So very shortly, members of the committee can expect to get a copy of the report, which you can review over the weekend and over break. And when that does go out, we will give, we'll, we'll make a suggestion on a hard stop for questions, because if folks do have questions, but we just want to be sure the UMass team has time to see them and incorporate them in their presentation, if possible. So we're very close.
Thank you for that update. And it sounds as if the report will be coming out very soon to committee members, so that's great to hear as well. Are there any questions from the team?
Well.
I just appreciate all.
Go ahead, Mr. Hopcroft.
Well, Dr. Matthews, I went first last time. You take this one.
Okay, no, I just wanted to ask. Okay, no, I just wanted to ask, so I, I know that that's a night that I have a conflict. Are, are the other school committee members able to be there that night so that we're, we're well represented in that group? Because it feels like we're sort of the primary clients of this. Um, at least, you know, sort of starting out the, the process.
So, so I'll, I'll say, um, I, I am available that night. And um, uh, and I was just going to thank um Mr. Nixon and Brenner and the UMass team and say that the sooner you can get it to us, the better. Because I know you want to give them some time to respond to our questions. I imagine this isn't a two-page document, but probably a forty or eighty or something like it's an in-depth study.
Like thirty.
It's thirty-one.
Listen to, well, um, but just to give us time to read it, reflect on it. And Dr. Matthews isn't going to be here that night, so he's particularly going to want to get his input in early. Um and uh get back from them, uh, but yeah, it's a really important document. So thank you for the work.
And, and it just gave you a little more back. The reason why I know we're very close is so there was core team, and we had representation from a number of boards and committees. There's some, been some helpful feedback, a couple of clarifying questions from folks who represent planning. So we just want to be sure that their questions are, are answered, and if there's any additional information we need to provide, or if we can clarify things a little bit, we should do that. We really want this document to stand on its own two feet. So um the team has actually blocked out time tomorrow to make revisions. So I'm not, not going to promise it tomorrow, but you know, a goal is tomorrow, but it might even be this weekend. It's, we're, we're very, very close to being able to distribute this.
Can I ask one, one other question, which, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, um but um if you could share a draft copy or your final copy with all of us um and not the public, I know it'll leak out, but there, there may be input that members that weren't part of that committee have that that you may want to update before you publish the final report if it may or may not be appropriate to do that, because you, you looked at it and you have all the other boards, but I, it is, there's something that feels funny to me. I don't know that we're necessarily the client or not, but that we're going to release, you know, the, the finished report before we have a chance to see it. But a, and I get if that's the process, that's fine, but um, but if there is an opportunity for us to to see it and give any input um in the event that it changes anything, that would be great.
I'll certainly run that suggestion by the Chair of the EFPBC.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, because it's remote, so Wind Cam, we will coordinate with Wind Cam. So we will, I know Dr. Matthews won't be able to be with us, but it will be recorded. BP will be able to stream it. We might even, you know, put a link on our website or what have you.
Thank you. Um, now we have anticipated future agenda items, which I will. I can read these off, or if you would like to put them up onto the screen, Mr. Marin? Yes, a minute, sorry. With, I guess, the, if anybody has any thoughts um on other future agenda items, here's how we stand at the moment. And otherwise, I would move on to next meeting. So we will have this February twenty fourth Zoom webinar with the EFPBC and other, other related boards. Uh then our next regular meeting will be February twenty seventh and then uh March thirteenth of this year.
And I want to clarify, Madam Chair, that meeting on the twenty-fourth, the joint session with the EFPBC will begin at six thirty, hard stop at seven thirty. We have some business items we have to address, meaning the EFPBC related to Lynch. So we're going to, we're going to meet at six o'clock. Uh, we'll wrap that up in fifteen or twenty minutes. So don't anybody freak out if they join in and people are already talking. So we, we have some Lynch business to get out of the way, but we'd like to kick off the joint meeting at six thirty.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have an executive session.
If I would, um, if it's okay with the Chair of the Committee, I would just recommend that we table the executive session. We have had one session. Two sessions with the WEA, and um we've had two good sessions, but they, uh, I really don't have much to update you on. Uh, we will not be actually negotiating with them again until March third. Uh, so you do have the February twenty-seventh meeting, at which I would be, we would be bringing some recommendations to you for your consideration and executive session.
I do have a question I'd like to lie, ask an executive tonight if I can.
We would not be tabling executive session.
Just real quickly, Mr. Nixon, is it something you need from the committee, or you could reach out to Dr. Hackett and ask?
Related directly to the stated reason for executive session.
All right, therefore, the purpose, we will be meeting in, in executive session for a purpose three, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As the Chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee. And we will not be returning to um public session thereafter. We will adjourn directly from the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and thank you very much. We will now move into executive session.
And do we have links already, or are they coming?
Yeah, they'll be, uh, they'll be coming too. Mr. Brink, are you able to send those out? Sometimes they're quicker than I am.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Bye.